We are now.
Perfect. All right, I want to welcome everyone this evening to our public hearing on the statement of community district needs and community board budget requests for fiscal year 24. My name is Fred Baptiste. I currently serve as Chair, Community Board Nine. I want to welcome all who are present this evening. Our public hearings are presented an opportunity for the board to get feedback from the public with respect to matters of importance and significance in the district. And for this month, we're going to be doing the hearing on the district needs. Once we've conducted the hearing, we'll be able to integrate that into a document that will be submitted to the mayor's office as part of our charter mandate as a community board. So at this time, I would ask you if the district manager Dante Arwin, please give a few brief remarks with respect to the statement of needs and the process going forward. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Dante Arwin. I'm the district manager for Brooklyn Community Board Nine. I'm just going to share my screen, so. Yeah. Can you see my screen? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so every year, the community board, every community board produces a statement of community district needs and budget request for their respective community districts. And so this report is readily available on our website. You can also view the reports on the Department of City Planning website as well. And so in this report, it essentially highlights the major needs that we as a community board see, you know, we as a community district and a community board, we should have a good understanding of what are the capital needs or what are the expense needs that, you know, we need in our district. And so, you know, through this process, we take testimony from members of the public and from board members about what types of programming or services that they would like to see come to Community District Nine. And through this process and through the testimony, we gather the information and we produce a report that looks like this. So I'll just scroll some of the demographics, but. So see, the report will be top three pressing issues. So over the past, I believe, at least three district needs statements, the pressing issues have been affordable housing, infrastructure, resiliency, and youth and children's services, youth and programming. And so, you know, these are definitely services that, you know, we don't see an abundance of here in our community district, and that's why they've been a major priority to the board for years now. And so, you know, with the work that you all are doing in the committees, you know, this is also an opportunity for you to express, you know, certain things that you would like to see happen in the community. For example, I know that the Transportation Committee has been working diligently with the Department of Transportation for years to get speed bumps on certain streets throughout the district. This would be an opportunity for you as a board member or any member of the public who knew those specific streets to request that on their record from the Department of Transportation. And so what we would do in the board office is we would compile this information and submit it as a request. This obviously would be capital request to the Department of City Planning as part of our record. And so if you go through the previous district need statements, you will see that it shows the different types and different types of things that were requested and what agency is applicable for whatever that request is. And so you can see like renovation of senior center would fall under DIFTA. And so it essentially lays out everything from youth, education, child welfare, to transportation, to public safety, so on and so forth. And so this public hearing is an opportunity for, again, board members and any members of the public to say on the record and request, you know, specific programming or capo projects that they would like to see come to the community district, and then we will compile that information and formulate this report.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Dante. So at this time, we will take commentary from the public with regards to the statement of needs document. Do we have anyone who signed up for commentary?
Yes, Maxine Barnes called ahead and signed up. Suki emailed, I believe, ahead of time to sign up for commentary as well.
Okay, we will begin with them. And I would ask for anyone and any residents who are currently online with us this evening, if you wish to provide commentary, please use the raise hand function. If you are on by phone, you can use star nine, which will raise your hand, at which point the district office staff will add you to the queue and we'll recognize you. Okay, please, if you could promote Ms. Barnes, we can hear her.
Ms. Barnes should be.
Good evening, community. Was the fiscal year ended 23 information that was just shown available on CB9 website? Was the public able to view that ahead of time?
Yes, it's on the CB9 website.
Where exactly?
If you go to our about page.
Okay. I'll find it from there. Thank you, Dante. Okay, moving on with my question. Certainly, the public, the community would like us to make clear recommendations, result-oriented, policy initiatives that come from CB9 based on documentation, data-driven information to address CB9 needs and budget requests. The community asks, in light of overdevelopment in our already dense community, that CB9 lists initiatives to address the destructive results of gentrification and overdevelopment. The community asks that existing sites in CB9 be maintained and updated, absent any district-wide rezoning or spot rezoning. Also specifically, the community has expressed a request. Hello?
Your good Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Chair. The community has requested that developers be required to put in place rat control measures on any area that they are developing. They put in preventive measures and, again, controls to decrease the rat population on any site that they are developing. Also, the community requests that the EIS Environmental Impact Statement and EAS be strengthened and required for all increased heights. The climate changes are destroying our environment. The destructive negative effects are documented and data-driven. We also request to put an immediate moratorium on district-wide or spot rezoning. It is documented, data-driven, that 69,000 black and brown Brooklyn residents have been displaced in Brooklyn. Also, we recommend, the community has said to me and feel that we, I said, require developments on a work in, any work in site to put in place rat controls and preventative measures in real time. That's what I left off, you know, not later, in real time. One last thing, a request to study the ratio of additional resources needed in proportion to additional residents. For hospitals, we have lost so many hospitals, schools, water and sewer, mass transit, sanitation, mental health facilities.
You've exceeded your time. I need you to conclude your remarks.
Oh, okay. All right. One last thing is really important to me, that a level of support where request legislation that was proposed by Assemblyman Cunningham, that all public schools or taxpayer-funded public schools be open for after-school programs, not just basketball, music and art, dance, theater, band, computer lab, academic tutors, and homework assistance. I have one more, but okay, I'll save it. Thank you for engaging me.
All right. And I would advise as well, if you do have a longer list, you can also submit that by email to the district office.
Okay, thank you. I will. And it'll be considered. Thank you.
Okay, so next I have on the speaker's list is Suki. Suki, are you on?
Hi, Fred. So I have one specific comment and then a couple of general comments. My specific comment relates to the request for trash cans on page 43. The request is for the Paris site models to replace wire trash cans throughout the district. I did look up the Paris site receptacle and I found an image on trashdepot.com. It basically looks like a large brown metal dumpster. I don't, I did have a chance to ask a couple of people what they thought about that. One of our merchants said she thought it was weird and strange to have that replace the regular trash cans. And I think what people had in mind and what I think our council member had promised us on the street corners was something more like the big-belly trash cans. So if the district office could look into that, that would be appreciated. My, I understand also the Environment Committee had asked just for more of the kinds of cans that you had already gotten for us in some places, which are those round aluminum cans, which kind of takes me to my second comment, which is we as board members got this document on Friday for a hearing Monday. It didn't, wasn't, as committees, we didn't have a chance to review this. And I think it's really important for us to have that if we want for agencies to take these requests seriously, to have the time for the public and for the committees to review it to make sure it's consistent with what we're doing and saying in our committees, as well as having the chance to get public feedback. I mean, again, as I said to Dante before, I appreciate that this is a required document and that you did it to make sure that we met the requirements. But I'm really hoping that there is more time for feedback. You know, some of these requests have been on this document for.
Because you exceeded your.
Yeah, some of these requests have been on this document for like the last seven or eight years. They haven't been updated with respect to land use. That request for a district-wide rezoning was controversial, you know, as Maxine pointed out. What I felt comfortable putting in last year when we had time was the request for down zoning and contextual zoning in my neighborhood. So, you know, again, I think this needs to be updated and cleaned up and run by the committees.
I have to move on. I want to remind everyone, please make sure, please stick to the two minutes because we do have a limited time in terms of which to do the the hearing. And we want to make sure we hear as many people as possible. Dante, who we have next?
I see, Ilford Pruitt.
Okay, Mr. Pruitt, you have two minutes. Go ahead. You're muted right now, Mr. Pruitt. Pruitt, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
I just wanted to make a correction in regards to the previous speaker before Suki. She made reference to the fact that 69,000 black people have left have left us, I forget now how she categorized it, whether it was the city or the borough. But I spent a lot of time with the census over the last 20 years and something like 84,000 black people have left Brooklyn alone. And so that's the correction. I don't know where that 69,000 number comes from, but 84,000 black people have left the borough since the last census. Yeah, that's my, I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you very much for your commentary. Next, I see Dante, I have Beverly, who's the next?
Yep.
I just have a question. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just have a question. When is this due?
October 31st.
And we just got it on Friday? I just thought I missed it.
Yes, you just got it on Friday. We're just doing the budget hearing now. We weren't able to do it in September, so October was our next. It's been on our website, but, you know, I will admit, we probably could have done a better job of preparing board members, but, you know, we at least wanted to give an opportunity for people to see it over the weekend, have an opportunity to comment, respond. And then, you know, over the next couple of days, individuals will still be able to submit testimony. But we wanted to at least be able to have the public hearing so we can meet the requirement.
Okay, um, so, okay. Moving forward, guys, I realize it would require us to visit the website regularly, which is not something that I do. But moving forward, can you drop it in our inbox, email boxes without it being us having to go to the website all the time, especially something that's this important? Because now I'm looking at the housing part and it just says affordable housing. And all of us in this room know affordable is, depends on who's using it. It depends on that person. Affordable, for the most part, should be working class. That means if an individual is making 45, the mean income is $50,055 now. But if a developer comes in, the lowest salary in that building is going to be $65,000. So we need time. Housing needs time, zoning needs time. We need time. Yes, we should have looked at the website, but it should have been in our inbox. So moving forward, can we do that instead? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I think it's taken. Point well taken, and we'll make sure, you know, the team will discuss that. But I would also like to say as well that, you know, definitely while we're here to take commentary this evening, if there's any additional commentary or things that you would like to see incorporated into the document, please feel free to send your thoughts as well, in addition to providing testimony this evening. So that way, we can still do that in time for the document to be submitted.
Okay, I'll do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. All right, I see Ms. Westerall.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I looked over the document the best that I could and I saw some things in there and I too am like Beverly wishing for more time so my committee could make some additions to this related to environmental protection, air quality, things of that nature that need to be on here. As you know, we're suffering a great deal with demolitions and development and contractors not taking proper care to protect the community in many ways. We need, I'd like some more time to add that. And I didn't see anything related to that in this area. I didn't, I saw Montgomery mentioned quite a lot, Bedford Rogers, no, Strand. I didn't see Empire mentioned at all on this document other than related to the police force wanting new barracks and parking lots. So I'd like some time to focus on that. I also noticed a strange thing, a strange item with a request for a building in a park. I don't know if that's Prospect Park, but like a community center to expand or add a community center. I imagine for youth, it's a good idea, but I don't know. Are we asking for buildings in Prospect Park? That really wasn't clear to me. And how the, you know, I called Mia today because I wasn't sure about how the like what the meaning was of the numbers in front of each item. So I do understand that and I hope other people do as well, like which, the lower the number, the more important it is, like one of 70, two of 70, like that type of thing. So I, we only have until October 31st. I mean, how much of a change could we make in this? Don't we have to like discuss it? Was there a committee? I'm just a little concerned because if these are our budgetary requests, it's important that we, you know, get it right and request what we need for our community. And I'm hoping to do a better job than what's here. And what's here is good, you know, but I think we could do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the commentary and definitely we'll take that to note. And Dante, Mia, if we can look, is it possible for us to revise even after submission? Is something is possible or?
I'll inquire. Yeah, I'll look into that, of course.
And again, if, you know, if members or the public do see additional information or things they would like to see included, please make sure you get that to the office so we can try and incorporate it as well.
I, should I send it to you? I also got a link in my email to like submit this to like at large, like where's the best place to submit my ideas? And is this for, like, say somebody has an idea for their school? Would that be on here or is that elsewhere? Like somebody wants like, you know, air conditioners or something for their school, like my daughter's school did that one year and they got these wonderful air conditioners for the whole school. So.
Yeah, if they're specifically what, they can send them to us as well and we'll see where it's appropriate to incorporate those as well. And again, I would probably also recommend, put, part of story budgeting, they're still taking stuff, so let's make sure we get that word out as well for the different.
Yeah, we need, we need, we need money for this district to improve it. So I'm all in for getting as much as we can.
All right. So we're going to see next in this order. So we're going to see Minealagute. I saw Jay Sored is one of the attendees. And then I see Primo. So we'll go in that order.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a quick comment regarding, yes, this is due October 31st, but it's one of our duties that we have to do every year. And I noticed we have some of the same comments from last year that we didn't have enough time to review anything. And being that a lot of the items are the same items for years, as someone mentioned, for the past six years, why don't we just take the document that we have now in mid-year, just go through it and make the upgrades or the updates that we need at mid-year as opposed to waiting for now when everyone gets frustrated that we didn't have enough time? Like we just put it as one of our general, you know, something on the calendar for each committee to go through at a certain time as opposed to now everyone's in panic mode because, you know, their item may not be reviewed or taken seriously. That's it. Just a recommendation that we do it like three, four months before the year ends and then we'll be ready when this year opens. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that commentary. We'll definitely make note of that in terms of fine tuning the process. Thank you for that. All right, could you please promote Mr. Sored?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the requirement for posting the agenda in terms of notice time for the public? How many days in advance does the community board post the agenda for the community board? How many days in advance does it post it for committee meetings is one of the two questions I have. Fred, I'm sorry, Mr. Baptiste, do you know how many days in advance? Is there a rule that says a guideline that says that the community board is going to post the agenda five days in advance on the community board for the board, for each committee? We're going to do it three days in advance so people know whether to show up to tell other people, hey, come out?
Right, there is a requirement for that per OML. I'm trying to recall what it is.
72 hours, I believe it is for meetings. And then for public hearings, 10 business days, I believe that it is. So, yeah, so when the board office gets the agenda from the committee chair, we put it up online.
Was this posted online, the agenda for today? 72 hours in advance?
No, but the other part of that is OML doesn't call for the actual agenda to be posted, but it does require the posting of the meeting. And as we post in advance, that's the requirement. So, you know.
I got you. Let me just say two things. In terms of telling people to come out from the community and people being aware of the issue and doing the research on it, even though the rule may be three days, perhaps the community board can say, listen, we're going to do it seven days in advance. We're going to post it in a conspicuous place where there's a button that says the community board, here's the agenda next to wherever the meetings are so people know if it's relevant to get their other neighbors out to it. Number two is just the public records. Instead of me doing a FOIL request and perhaps the the community board could post all relevant documents onto the online resources. Like there's a whole bunch of documents on the issue that I'm concerned about vital Brooklyn. There's the RFPs, there's the, there's the the plan, there's the sketches, there's so much public information out there, it could be posted. So just my main point to close would just be if you could post the agenda ahead of time for community boards and also this particular community board and also for the committee to say what it is. And then the second thing is that if you can post the relevant material so people could read it. And number three is in terms of the format, instead of having a panelist format where I see everybody who's on it since I've been, you know, chosen right now to speak, if everybody could see all of the time, everybody that's on it, you could see everybody's reaction. So you can get more of a community feel. You could see who else is out there. If I just see five people, I may be bored. I want to see that other people from my neighborhood are there or waiting. You could have a hybrid notion of it. So I disagree with the current form. It makes it boring, less interactive. If you guys can consider going to the other format and just mute everybody. So people can't talk. You solve your problem. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks for your comment. All right, I'm sorry, who did I have? I'm sorry, Primo, we have Primo now.
Thanks, Fred. Just to circle back on the budget question, I think it's worth stating because I remember this conversation vividly, that about 99 to 100% of our budget requests are rejected every year. And so I understand that we could be doing things earlier and that's, that's not the case only for CB9. It's the case for basically all of the community boards across New York because it was something that we asked Dante to look into and he posted a document with kind of the accepted and rejected proposals. And the city is not giving out money to community boards. And I think we can understand that the current administration is also probably not going to be distributing money, which is why I think it's probably smart for this board to perhaps expend their energy in some different places in terms of bringing funds into the community. So appealing to our community board members, which has been effective in the past. Christian is leading the building of a foundation for this community board. And so just want to bring us back to the awareness that there are other sources of funding that have been far more reliable in the past. The reason we have the same list six years in a row is because the city has never given us money for any of those things. So there are other ways for us to bring money into the community and I think we're beginning to focus on those areas, although we can probably do more in those spaces. That's all I had to share. Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Dante.
Very much. All right, do we have any more commentary? Dante, do we have anyone? What else was raised then?
So Suki and Maxine Barnes have their hands raised. I was looking for anybody that was first time. I don't see any first-time speakers.
Well, unfortunately with the rules of the hearing, we allow two minutes per speaker, so we're not going back to do second. So if we have no one else who is actually submitted for commentary, we're going to conclude. Is anyone else? Has not spoken.
I see, okay, so a couple of hands went up. Cheryl Bernard and Richard Raphael.
All right, we will probably be able to see the two of them and I believe that will bring us to the close. So we'll be able to, please promote them so they can have their minutes with you.
Okay.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, good evening. This is my first time. I'm not too sure what the commentary is supposed to be on regarding my neighborhood. Can I speak about what I'm looking to get help with or is there a certain topic that's on the board right now?
Well, we are currently discussing. Well, we are currently discussing the statement of needs for the board. If you wish, uh, for the district, if you wish to speak on that, you can do that, or if you would like, you can defer to public commentary during the actual board meeting. You can speak directly about your issues in, you know, in your neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I would like to speak directly or I can speak now. It doesn't matter. I don't want to hold up anyone's time is what I'm saying.
Okay, um, you know, let's give you, let's postpone, so we'll take you down as a the speaker for the next section.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And then uh Richard Raphael lowered their hand, so.
Alright, uh, so there are, are there any other speakers for, I see a Zoom user with their hand up.
Yeah, Zoom user and Dalton Robinson.
Uh, Dalton Robinson's hand is down.
Okay, so Zoom user.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Akia Conley. Um, this is my first time in the board meeting. I'm just happy to be joining guys tonight. I'm representing um One Brooklyn Health from the Marketing and Communications Department. So if there's any questions that you guys need to know about our services or community events, um, I can, um, I will look forward to answering any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, sorry, your name is again?
Akia, Akia Conley from One Brooklyn Health Marketing and Communications Department.
Okay, um, alright, so we're actually in public comments. We're actually doing a hearing right now, but if you would like, you can have time during um you can have time during public commentary if you would like to say a few extra words.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, I believe that has exhausted our speakers list and we are now at the end of the public hearing. I want to thank all those who provided testimony, uh, and we definitely hear um the comments and we're going to be looking to to make sure we're incorporating things into the document and also taking this on a go-forward basis, how we can improve this process. Um, I do thank everyone for your comments and I please, I encourage you to please, if you still have, need a few more days, a couple more days to in terms of um being able to think of things and submit them, uh, that's absolutely fine. I would just ask if you could mail those to the district office. Uh, that way they can also examine them and figure out how we can incorporate the um uh, you know, the the feedback into the to the document to make it stronger. Uh, but again, I thank everyone. Um, and at this time.
Quick, uh, question.
Yes, just roll with us.
Oh, yeah, question. Um, the the proposals we might generate for uh, infrastructure repairs and and that sort of thing, that has to be on city property, they have to be on government property, right? It it can't be on a a private business, uh, is that correct?
Uh, mostly depends on what.
Yes.
Yeah, but I would think so.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Yes, but probably the best thing to do is submit. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but but at least let us know, we can.
Alright, okay, alright.
Alright then, uh, we are now calling the meeting, uh, the the general board meeting of Community Board Nine to order. Madam Secretary, you present? Black, we have a few minutes. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, we are going to call the meeting to order. Uh, we are now entering our public session. So I want to thank everyone for uh joining us this evening. Again, my name is Fred Baptiste. I serve as Chair of Community Board Nine. Uh, this evening, we have a number of items we're going to be considering, including um applications to the State Labor Authority. Uh, we'll be receiving reports from a number of committees and uh as well as from the district office staff and as Chair, I'll be providing reports to the the board and to the district. Uh, we are going to waive the ruling, uh, uh, the reading of the rules of order for the meeting. They've been pub- um, published on our district website. Uh, I would just very simply say that, uh, we just want to make sure that everyone is respectful of all the speakers, uh, that we keep microphones muted, um, and that we respect different viewpoints. Um, again, as a part of housekeeping, if you are on by phone, the star nine function is used to raise and lower hands, uh, as well as the star six button is used to mute. Uh, so if you need to be recognized, please use the star nine. The staff will um will recognize you as necessary, as appropriate, and at that time you can unmute. But otherwise, please make sure you keep your microphones muted if you are not speaking. Uh, at this time, uh, do we have the Chair of the Public Safety Committee? Present.
Yes, I'm here, Fred.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the Chair of Public Safety will be commit, uh, uh, and one um modification we're making, uh, unless this is a change, we have two licenses we're actually considering this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um, for the public and for the board, we will be considering items A for Glue NYC LLC and item C for Silver Rice. Item B and D have been referred back to the committee and they will be can, uh, considering those during their committee meeting uh in the month of November. Uh, and with that, uh, I hand the chair, uh, the floor over to the Chair of Public Safety.
Thanks, Fred. Apologies, everyone, for not being on camera. I am I'm currently managing my first bout of COVID and so doing my best here, laid up in bed and I try to make sure we can get these liquor licenses through um, for the businesses that have um come and and presented their uh applications to the committee. Um, I'd love to quickly walk you through some of the details for both of these applicants and then uh, turn the floor over to both of the applicants to speak a little bit themselves on behalf of their businesses. Uh, so I'm just going to walk you through these two applicants really quickly, just so that you have all the pertinent details that I think are most important. And so the first applicant is Glow NYC, um, which is a pizza and wine bar. Um, they are reapplying, so they've already been granted a liquor license. This is an application for beer and wine and cider, so it is not a full liquor license. And uh, the business is open during very reasonable hours. Um, they are uh, we we've checked in with the NYPD and the FDNY and they've had absolutely no complaints um on the business. It is um located at four oh six Rogers Avenue. For those of you who may be familiar with the business, um, they are really just operating until seven P M. So we're not looking at late hours and we're not looking at a full um liquor license application here, just a reapplication for beer, wine and cider. Um, and I think with that, I'd love to turn it over to um the representative from from Glow NYC to speak a little bit about their business.
Hi, uh, my name is Merrick Schreit. I I I I believe you described uh in every detail. Um, it's very low-key tapas and wine, wine kind of a place closing at seven P M. Uh, very reasonably, this is actually a renewal, this is not a new application. Um, been there for a couple of years already, um, very well received by the neighborhood.
Wonderful. Thank you, Merrick. Is there anybody who, uh, Fred, would you like us to pause for questions or would you like me to roll through the second application?
Uh, we will, we can take two brief questions and then we'll move on to the second.
Great. Um, if folks have questions, we'd love to hear two questions. Um, Mr. Pruitt, I see your hand is up.
Uh, uh, thanks you, thanks a lot. Uh, to the restaurateur who's moving into this neighborhood, um, is your, is your business ADA compliant?
It is on ground, ground level, uh, with no steps, so it is ADA compliant. Uh, as far as the bathroom, um, I'm not sure right now.
Okay.
Yeah, but I know it's, it's basically there's no steps between a sidewalk and the interior of the of the place.
No, 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 no slabs of concrete between the, in the door frame?
No.
Okay, alright, okay, that's, that's good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for this applicant? Okay, seeing none, uh, Primo.
I'll take it away with the second applicant. We're gonna move on uh to Silver Rice NYC, which many of you may be familiar with. It is located at five seven five A Flatbush Avenue. It is a sushi restaurant. Um, that is also a renewal. This is not their first liquor license granted by the board. Uh, similarly, they are applying for a beer, wine and cider license. Um, Silver Rice also has fairly reasonable hours open uh from four thirty P M to nine thirty P M every day of the week. Um, as the owner described to us during the committee meeting and can say a little bit more about here, it is currently kind of closed for in-person seating and so the beer, wine and cider license is really only for deliveries. Their their kitchen is available to make um, deliveries on platforms such as Seamless. And so that is currently how they're distributing food throughout the neighborhood and you do have the option of um adding a beer or a sake or whatever to your order. And the business has been in the neighborhood for years. There is a partner business in farther north Crown Heights uh, uh, in in Community Board Eight. Similar to Glow NYC, this location has not received any complaints from FDNY or NYPD for noise complaints or any trouble of any sort. Um, and so those are the basic details of the application here. And with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kato to speak a little bit about his business.
Okay, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Hideki from Silver Rice. Uh, we opened for the business uh about seven years in the neighborhood. During the COVID, uh, we closed the door, so we only take delivery pickup orders uh through soda party apps such as Grab Hub, Dora, Uber Eats. And uh, we've been doing the same way because we are trying to be as safe as possible because we don't know yet where this COVID situation is going. Uh, so none of the customer coming to the restaurant still. Uh, we sell sushi roll, bowl, side dishes and beyond wine and soft drinks. Very simple menu. Um, we used to have eight to nine uh dining space, but we don't know uh where we're gonna open the door for the customer yet.
Wonderful. Thank you, Hideki. Um, I think one question that I had for you that was raised in our committee meeting um, that we had to ask you was just if you do open, um, and I believe this was um Ms. Newsom's question, uh, i- if you do open your restaurant again, are you intending to put um, kind of like a sidewalk enclosure as well for for guests to be seated?
Uh, well, our street, uh, street in front of our restaurant is very narrow. So probably what we can do is uh maybe put like bench for three people. Maybe that's all we can do because I think we have a bus stop in front of our restaurant as well. So I don't think that's gonna be our option.
Understood. That's very helpful. Thank you. Um, at this time, Fred, if you're comfortable with it, we'll open up for questions. I see um Ms. Westerall has her hand raised.
Sure, um, actually, yeah, so we'll see Ms. Westerall. We're holding before we start. Are there, is anyone else who has a question?
I just want to ask if um it's possible for someone to order um with takeout or delivery? Can we get sake?
Yes, um, we had a same question before and according to uh uh, the authority, customer has to order certain amount of food if they like to order delivery sake or beer. So we always make sure customer order uh decent portion of food when they place order for sake or beer.
What about takeout?
Takeout is, uh, I think same way. Customer has to order uh some food item.
Okay, great. I just wanted to know that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Teresa. Um, seeing no other questions at this point, um, Fred, I will pass it back to you and thank both of our applicants for coming and everyone for asking questions.
Okay, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank the applicants. Uh, we will be considering the applications during the business session. Uh, and and we will vote on them uh as during the uh voting hours for today's meeting.
So isn't there two more? Isn't there two?
Yeah, so so Teresa, we've kind of discussed this, but we're sending the two other applicants back to committee. And so uh, we're going to meet with them one more time just because we have more questions. So at this point, we're during this voting session, we're only going to vote on two applications. The other two applicants we'll meet with again in committee next month.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't know that. I was waiting for, I thought there were going to be four.
Yep, just two today.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, alright, uh, thank you. So at this time, we are now going to open for public comments, uh, the public commentary session. Uh, public comment period is for thirty minutes. Speakers are allowed up to three minutes um, to address the board uh regarding any issues of concern. Um, Dante, do we have any people, anyone who signed up for public commentary for this evening?
Maxine Barnes signed up for a public comment before.
Okay, so we're gonna have Maxine Barnes. Uh, we had Ms. Bernard. Nobody can give them the last name, right? I think it's Bernard. Um.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take her down as well. Alright, so I see Maxine Barnes.
I wonder about Alicia Conley. Did you?
Who?
Alicia. Akia Conley, Ms. Conley from One Brooklyn Health. What did you say?
Thank you very much. Thank you for catching that. Uh, my apologies too. Yeah, Zoom user, yes. Uh, if you would like to speak, just use the raise hand function, we can add you to the list as well. And I apologize, you know, it's Akia, I believe it's and you know, in please correct them, uh, you know, you have the correct name when you speak, if you're interested.
Apologize for writing my, sorry, writing fast.
No, thank you for catching that. I appreciate that. Okay, alright, so we'll begin with uh Ms. Barnes. Please phone Ms. Barnes.
Good evening again, community. Before my time starts, uh, with the inability to engage in the chat, I would like to correct what was said um about my statements on the fiscal year ending uh twenty-four. Um, and.
It's all part of the three, so you have that, but we have three minutes.
Uh, Pu- Pruitt uh was questioning, I said sixty-nine thousand black and brown residents in Brooklyn and eighty, I think it was eighty-nine in uh um all of the city. And I never said a down zoning should be recommended in um our area. So ideally, my time will start now. It is imperative now more than ever before that the community residents and CB nine unify and in solidarity author our own changes to Yolup and voice both disagreement and agreements and why to the city of yes and blast. It's huge. And and it affects each the we've, uh, you know, it's so annoying with this time. The mayor publicly stated that the text amendments uh suggested a city of 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 yes uh were generated from, that were generated from the CBC. He said, and I quote, blast is a key component of city of yes. Having said that, that these initiatives must be studied by each and every committee in our uh uh in Community Board Nine and reported on as they affect every committee. Yola, transportation, mental health, public safety, environment, education, the proposed initiative and Koi and Blath say nothing about infrastructure, additional uh um schools, water source uh that would sustain the increased population in our already dense and over uh uh development of community. So uh, again, it is clearly very important that every committee report on these initiatives, study them and be able to come to committee, bring back uh committee meetings to vote on and put a motion on the floor and the general board. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barnes. Uh, so next I have on the speakers list, uh, Ms. Cheryl Bernard.
Should be able to hear it.
I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good night, everyone. I'm so excited to be on. I'm going to try to definitely uh, come and make it a habit. I live on a corner of Troy and Winthrop. Our corner is a very dangerous corner. Um, I have been, the commu- community board should have known me. I sent about twenty-eight emails trying to get a stoplight. We do have the stoplight now. Unfortunately, people are running the lights. They're just going right through them. They're stopping and going around, so I'm gonna try to see if I could work with the. They're stopping and going around, so I'm gonna try to see if I could work with the local precinct, the inspector, but I need the help with the community board regarding that. And also what's happening right now is I think the Parks Department is trying to plant some trees in our area. They used to ask people if it's okay, but now they're just digging up the street and we don't want trees in our area because we live a corner, a block from the men's shelter. And these men roam the streets at night. The streets are very dark because the trees are overgrown. And, um, I, I, I'm gonna install lights on the side of my house just to help women that have to walk at night um, to have the place lit. I've been working with, uh, DOT Deputy Commissioner Workman. She has been awesome. She saw one of the twenty-eight emails that I've sent. I've had, thank God for my Zoom, my Ring camera, cuz that's how I have the proof. I have people being struck by cars. I have so much video information, but right now, my main concern is they're trying to plant these trees. They already started cutting the sidewalk. We don't want them. It is too dark. It's gonna increase rats to be burrowing down in the dirt. The trees are gonna get into our sewer line. We already have so much trees across the street from us cuz we're across from Kings. I think it's Kings Brook, uh, psychiatric or Kings Brook, whatever street it is. It's on Winthrop. It stretches on from Winthrop, Albany, Clarkson and Utica. So that big area has nothing but trees. The overgrown trees are so bad right now. People can't even see the stoplight, the traffic light that put up. So, I mean, we have too many trees here and it's a safety issue because once you put the trees up, it's gonna make it even darker. Not to mention it burrowing in our, our, our plummings and, and, you know, the, the streets, it's, it's gonna cause more leaves. We already have so many leaves to pick up. I'm trying to get them to stop this. I, I, I need help because they already cut the sidewalk. We don't want any trees here. Can someone help us, please? I will get the whole community in on it. If you want, we've called three one one, three one one, tell us that, well, we can't take the complaint because there's no tree there yet. I'm like, but I'm trying to prevent the trees from being I don't, I don't know what to do, but we need help desperately.
Thank you very much for your commentary, Ms. Bernard. Uh,
I'm sorry.
If I would ask you to counter.
Sorry, Fred. Uh, speaking to the young lady, you could start by getting some pruning done to the overgrown trees across the street and then follow up for, hopefully they can help you follow up with the oncoming ones.
Well, we've been asking for them to prune the trees because they put up the traffic light and you can't even see one traffic light because of the trees. But I think DOT may do it hopefully, but the trees are not on our property. The trees are in the property across from us.
Yeah, but if it's blocking the traffic light, that's accident prone city. They need to deal.
Exactly.
But I wanna make sure we're able to move, uh, the, you know, the, 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 the public commentary. But Ms. Bernard, but I would, what I would ask is definitely, um, Dante, would you be able to work with Ms. Bernard in terms of making sure we document everything and saying who can connect her with?
Yeah, connect, yeah.
If you could just contact our district manager, uh, he and the team will take care of you and we'll make sure, you know, we're starting these conversations, you know.
Okay, and contact how?
Uh, yes, our, our number is seven one eight, seven seven eight, nine two seven nine.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, no problem. And if you would prefer to email, if you have multiple things, uh, you can go onto our website, uh, but our email is BK zero nine hyphen number one at CB dot NYC dot gov.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, um. All right, I see Ms. Newsom. Okay, speakers list, I see Ms. Newsom, I see Ms. Chung and I see Ms. Westerall.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Newsom, go ahead. You have the floor.
Perfect timing. My complaint is the same thing. There is an organization, they came down Crown, they're coming down McKeever Place. They're partying, they're part, they're planting trees. We don't need trees on McKeever Place. Across from the park that's already poorly lit. Now they're gonna plant trees. That makes that street even more dangerous. It's, it's, it's not necessary. Crown is complaining because they wanna plant trees when Crown has trees that are falling over, but the organization is not addressing the trees that are falling over. They wanna plant more. We need help with this. Thank you very much cuz they, they can't. They should, they should have our permission, Fred. They should have our permission because they don't know the community. They have so much money they need to spend on the planting of trees. There are other communities that could use them more.
Thank you for that commentary and absolutely, we'll have to look into that cuz I'm not sure who the authority is on planting trees. I didn't, I thought that was something that parks would do. Um, and if it's, uh, you know, parks doing it, then that's a conversation we'd have to have with them about that as well. But we're definitely looking at all the.
And then down and on McKeever Place, they've taken a sidewalk where two people can pass. Now only one person can pass. So if they're, they're, what, for whatever reason they're doing it, if it's just to spend the money, they're affecting our quality of life on that street. It needs to be corrected. Thank you. And I'll be sending you an email also, Dante.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, Suki Chung.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that all of the board members are aware of the City of Yes information session, uh, for the public on October twenty-seventh at seven PM. Uh, you can go to the Department of City Planning website, uh, under the section for City of Yes. There, there is an info session. It's a, it's a Zoom webinar. Um, if you're not able to attend, I, I know we have a meet and greet for our board members on that evening. There is also a rec- an earlier session that was recorded on October seventeenth and as our chair pointed out that there is these, um, that, that's on the Department of City Planning's YouTube channel. You can see that. It's really, really important, not just for the committees, but for every individual because the proposal is to rezone. Every single part is to upzone every single part of our community apart from Lefferts Manor and the other single family district on Crown and Carroll and the CHU district on Empire Boulevard. So everyone here is affected personally. It will be a major, major change. And, you know, it's just really important that everyone understands how this affects them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, I see Ms. Westerall.
Hi, good evening. Um, I wanna piggyback on, uh, the tree pits and we have similar concerns in our neighborhood. Some people like them, some people don't. And there, there being, there, there's a lot of new holes. And, um, it's the Parks Department that is in charge of the tree pits. So I'm not sure how we would get in touch with them, but I, I think we do need to figure out a way going forward of getting permission or, or whatever, having community commentary. I know that you apply for those via three one one for trees to be placed. And I did see some people asking for them in that area. I don't know who or what, but, uh, the other thing is I wanted to talk about the five G link NYC towers. My, uh, neighbors are very concerned about the two five G towers that have been placed on. One is on Empire and Bedford. The other one is on Montgomery and Bedford, and there's some concern because those are not supposed to be, those are supposed to be placed in commercial areas, not close to residential spaces. There is, um, quite a few, uh, discussions and studies out there about the effects of those towers and how they're used for, um, data purposes, privacy violations, and, uh, they're not active yet, but two of them have been installed. And, um, we're actually gonna buy a device in our neighborhood to test, to test them once they go operative. So I think that we need to have some more concern and, uh, no, nobody talked to us about them. You know, those are, uh, privately owned devices on public space that are supposed to, in exchange for their uh, spying, which is what they will be doing, uh, offer a Wi-Fi connection. So why are there two so close together? People, people, everybody in my neighborhood is concerned about this. Maybe not everybody, but everybody on a, on a pretty big list. So, um, I'd like more discussion about that and I'd like to hear from whoever or however those were decided to be placed. And also, we do need to be, the third thing is we do need, need to be concerned about blast, city of yes, and taking away the powers of your committee. Why these, why this, not just the committee, but community boards? The reason why committee boards were created is to oversee this land use development and all those, everything that we're here for is gonna be removed from us. These go through pretty much. So we'll have even less ability to protect our communities than we do already. So I think that's dangerous and that we need to get on top of that. So I urge everybody in this community board to talk to your neighbors and go to those meetings and read the material and figure it out. You might wanna check out all the stuff that Alicia has, Alicia Boyd sends out. I've been reading that as well. And it's helping me understand. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that commentary and we'll definitely take up. So in terms of the city of yes blast and, uh, the Yolup Committee is actually starting the process of looking and vetting that. Uh, so there'll definitely be more conversations. Uh, there's a lot of material that, uh, we started putting out with respect to CBC. Uh, as things get generated in terms of, uh, COY, you know, city of yes COY, I guess I'm gonna start calling it for now. We'll definitely be sharing that information with the board as well. And absolutely, uh, I think from the committee level, if there are committees that, you know, feel like it's, it's in their purview and they would like to investigate, absolutely encourage that as well. And for the other, uh, issue that you talked about, so, um, and I keep going, Dante and the team, uh, we're gonna, we'll probably have a discussion about that as well in terms of the five G link towers. What is the plan? What's going on? Uh, we probably need some, uh, conversations with the agencies in terms of safety concerns as well. Okay, so Dante, if we can talk offline about that and we'll, we'll see how we engage that. Okay, all right, um. All right, so with that, I believe we have exhausted all the speakers lists. Uh, we are going to conclude the public, um, session. I wanna thank all those who, uh, provided comments to the board. Uh, and definitely we're gonna make sure that, uh, we are, you know, working as a, with the district office team, uh, in terms of, you know, talking to some of the agencies or the relative, the relevant agencies and making sure we get responses and see if we can plan next steps as well. Um, so, you know, hopefully we'll be able to provide, provide reports for your committees at, at the next general board meeting as well. Um, okay, so with that, at this time, we are going to the acknowledgements portion of our agenda. I would ask for all those, uh, um, elected officials or representatives or elected officials who are here with us this evening, if you could please raise your hand nice and high so we can acknowledge you and you can address the boards very briefly. But, you know, we definitely like to acknowledge you.
All right, so. Okay, uh, add Arna and Dalton Robinson. Has her head raised? Oh.
Well, go ahead.
Mister. Okay.
Um, can I just say a couple of words?
Uh, absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Um, I, my name is Arna Lipkin. I'm with Connect IDCC. It's a program on nine twenty-one East New York. Uh, Connect is work, we work out of, um, Interborough Mental Health Clinic, but we are an enhancement of mental health services. So what we do is we, we get community feedback. We utilize that feedback to create programming that can assist and enhance and empower the community. As such, we are, uh, doing a financial literacy program, uh, starting this week. I'm gonna see if I can share the screen, uh, possibly. Um, let's see, where do I find that? Share the screen. One second. I have the flyer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Westerall, but typically, you know, we just.
Oh, that's okay. Fine. No problem. That's okay. Well, anyway, you, you sent out, you sent out the flyer last week and it's gonna be for the next six weeks. We're having this, the first session will be on support services or benefits. Uh, we will have budgeting, banking, credit, savings, and finally, a panel on entrepreneurship. We'd love for all of you to attend. Uh, if you call the board, I guess that's the easiest way so that people don't have to write anything down. You can get the flyer and just go on the QR code and register starting, uh, this Wednesday at our office, nine twenty-one East New York at one o'clock or online on Zoom. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dante, who else we have?
Okay, uh, Mister Ali Slavon.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me and I'm taking notes of your conversations, anything that we can help on our side. And again, I'm, my name is Ali Slav and I'm community, community liaison for Congresswoman Yvette D. Clark. We are at two 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 Lenox Road. Our number is seven one eight, two eight seven, one one four two. We have a lot of information. I don't like to keep you on the Zoom calls at Clark that house that gov of activities that are happening in DC. Uh, my number is two oh two, eight two one, seven nine oh six. Any federal issues that you have, please contact our office. Also, we stand by our local uh, officials when we need, uh, letters of recommendation and letters of support. I just wanna say that, you know, we thank, uh, we had an eve- uh, an event, seventy-first precinct, thank the police officers for their wonderful work uh, with the Labor Day parade. Thank God it went by an event, a, a very much eventful, but thank God with no, uh, distractions, any, any heartbreak, any, any, uh, uh, shootings, any people getting hurt. The same with the Sukkah celebration in the Jewish community. It went by very, very fine and we thank the police officers for their work. Again, so please, uh, any questions, any federal issues, feel free to call me at two oh two, eight two one, seven nine oh six. And again, we're open for business, uh, through appointment or just coming through the door. And good evening again.
So much for joining.
And, uh, Dalton Robinson.
Yes, uh, good, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Board. Actually, this is my very first time with, uh, Board Nine. Um, I am from the fifth theater Assembly District and Board Nana just recently, um, joined our our, our, our part of, part of the district there. I'm just, as a matter of fact, foreshadowed, my member, I think she should be on at this moment in time. And, um, should love to actually address the board. So again, my name is Dalton Robinson, District Office Manager for Assemblywoman Monique Chandler Waterman, which I presume should be on there, uh, Mr. Chairman, just acknowledge her so she can speak.
Okay, I do not see her as yet. Uh, Dante.
Might be. Is it Ki- Ki- uh, is it Kiara?
No, no, not now. Okay, I would just make sure she gets on.
Okay.
Okay, so if, if she's joining, so once we see her, we'll make sure we absolutely promote her so she can bid greetings to the board.
Okay.
Thank you and, and, you know, great meeting you and I'm looking forward to working with the office.
Mr. Chair. Are we going to, are we going to go back to Ms. Conley now or are we gonna use her later?
Uh, if, when the, the assembly, when the member is able to join, we'll go back to her.
All right.
If we pass, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll allow her the time to address the board if we've done that. Okay, um, all right, Dante, are there any other representatives?
I see.
Representative, and I apologize if we've missed you in advance, um, please use, uh, the raise hand function, uh, so we can, you know, so you can, we can acknowledge you and you can bid greetings to the board and the, and the, and the district. Hey, I do not see anyone else. Dante, you see anyone?
No, I don't see anyone.
All right, so with that said, I would just wanna thank all the, the representatives who've come. Uh, you know, it's, it's definitely the partnership with, with our elected officials. That's what helps us move things in this district. Um, you know, I think you on, I mean, you've heard that, you know, some of the issues that are in the district and we're looking forward to working with you. Uh, so we say that right now in terms of being able to address that on, you know, for the district and the residents. Okay, so with that, we are now going to go into the business session. Um, Man and Secretary, I would ask, would you be able to call the role, please?
Fred, the assembly member is on.
Okay, so hold on before we do that. All right. Uh, please, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How you doing?
Hi, so my favorite people. This is my first meet. I'm so excited. Hello, everyone. I'm New York State Assemblywoman Monique Chandler Waterman, just took over from the former Assemblywoman Nick Perry. Um, I know we cover a little bit of, um, this district CB nine, but we wanted to. Um I know we cover a little bit of um this district CB9, but we wanted to make sure that our team is on and that you feel our presence and that we are here to support. I want to say, before I was elected, I had such a great relationship, Dante, Fred, the whole team there. Yeah, welcome. We were open arms. And um our, we just had an event that we did together on Montgomery um in Utica. And um thank y'all so much for showing up. So I'm just here for support. And we have a couple of meetings that we are going to be doing at least once a month. We have a vital voice meeting where we're gonna explain what do I do as an elected official, what is my responsibilities, how do you hold me accountable? So I definitely want to make sure we on November 19th and we're gonna have like a Thanksgiving dinner after. And we also are going to be doing, we, tonight, we did the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program because we pushed that information out. So you can also connect with our office and we could hook you up with the New York State Department of Financial Services because we need to make sure we don't leave any money on the table. We get all our loans zeroed out and there's another program with that as well. And I just want to make sure that we um know that 988, because you know, suicide go up as the holiday season come. 98 is a number that you could use if someone is going through a mental health crisis. It could be just, they feel sad, they feel overwhelmed, they need support. Because we know that police have a lot on their plate. Call a 911. They do not need a police response for someone in a mental health crisis. So we are making sure we push out that number. We have put posters up from Utica by Montgomery by Crown and those stores, those business owners have put the 98 posters up there. Uh we know we had Shahid Rasool that was um killed a few years ago right there in Utica, Montgomery. And to pay tribute or honor, we did a big block celebration and talked about the Daniels Bill, which will, will remove a police response for those in crisis. And I'm glad that CB9 was able to partner with us for that as well. So we just want to make sure that you know that we are here to service you, to help you. We at 903 Utica Avenue between Church and Snyder on number 718-385-3336. And I just want to say, thank you to the board, thank you to the district manager, thank you to the chair, thank you to the family here, thank you for the support. And I have Dalton Robinson, uh my office manager, he's on the line as well. And um this is my first time, so I'm not sure of the format, how much time, but I'll end now. And I'm not sure if you do questions, but I don't want to take up too much time, but thank y'all so much.
So thank you so much, Assemblywoman, for, for coming and joining us. Uh because we know it's just a toe, it's a toe hold in the district. But um but definitely, uh it's just glad to see that you are claiming us and we claim you as well. I am looking forward to working with you and your team. Uh and, and listen, the door is always open here.
Okay, and is Mia in the house? Mia, I know I did a lot with her too, right?
She is so good.
Oh.
Just checking some emails behind the scenes, but I'm here, glad to have you.
And I see a lot of um my uh friends on as well, but I will correct myself. I've been on here before, but not as an Assemblymember as a CBO when I worked for Health and Hospitals. So thank you so much for welcoming me back and I appreciate y'all. I'm gonna jump off, Fred is laughing at me, but I'm gonna jump off now to another me. I see you, Fred. And thank you so much. But Dalton will be here for any other questions or anything. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
So, you know.
Okay, alright, so I think with that, now we are going to begin the business session. So Madam Secretary, I would ask, would you call the role, please?
You're muted. Alright, you're good.
Iri Ali. Did I see Kiri? Okay, Nicholas Almonar.
Present.
Stuart Balberg. Fred Baptiste.
Present.
Naomi Baptiste. John Beckles Jr. Rabbi Yakov Berman. Warren Burke.
Here.
Augustine Blackwell.
Here.
Celeste Chase. Suki Chow.
Here.
Claire Sol Carey. Sol Carey.
Here.
Jamie Estee. Jamie Estee.
Present, here.
Thank you. Jamie Fulton. Jamie Fulton.
Is it Jamie or should it be Matthew Fulton?
I'm, well, Jamie Matthew, but his, they, they, on the, from the board, um.
Excuse me, did you call Naomi Baptiste?
Yes, I did.
Well, Naomi Baptiste is present.
Okay, girlfriend, hold on.
Uh huh, hello, yeah. Okay. Because they, because I'm saying that, um.
Matthew Fulton.
Yes, Matthew Fulton is here.
Oh, so Jim, and me make a correction, so you are not Jamie?
I am not Jamie, just Matthew.
Miss, uh Mrs. Watson Lord, I believe it is, uh Matthew Fulton and Jamie Epstein. It may be an error on the street.
Okay, okay, I'll fix it right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Tessa Hackett Viera. Bishop Sylvester Ham- Hamilton Gonzalez.
Here.
Abina Hatchful. Abina Hatchful. Primo Lasanna.
Present.
Mina Negutte.
Present.
Francisco Leopold. Francisco. Michael Leiber, Michael Leiberg. Matthias Lindberger. Courtney Louise. Courtney Louise.
I'm here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Kristen Lubal.
Present.
Letwin. Who is that that I missed? Okay, Letwin. Letne, Letwin Mavina. Erin Mazursky, Erin Mazursky.
Present.
Thank you. Vivian Morgan. Vivian Morgan. Patricia Moses.
Yeah.
Beverly Nusa.
Here.
Yankee Pearson. Yankee Pearson. Raile Pierce. Hey, Phil Caddy. Mister Privey.
Here.
Yunelo Rom Perry.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Dexter Roberts. Dexter Roberts. Felice. Thank you. Felice Robertson. Felice Robertson. Rashida Siddique.
Yeah.
Rashida Skites. Rashida Skites. Debbie Timothy.
Present.
Thank you. You're a steward myself. Loriann Wosley. Loriann Wosley. Cheryl Wright. Hold on. Hold on some, I, some. Miss Wester Doll.
Present.
If I could call, are there any members of the board who did not hear their names called?
Yes, I'm sure we know. Kyrie Ali.
I call you number one, Kyrie.
Well, Linda, I'm sure you also saw me there. My phone cut off and then I'm coming back.
I'm sorry, but I need you to say, yes, you're here.
You should have marked me present. This happens every time.
No, I, okay, Mister, Mister Chair, Mister Chair, we have 25 persons present.
Well, Ya- Yakov Berman is present as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought. There were a few people that I called that I didn't hear.
When I pull up, when I pull up the, the names in the listing, I don't see now, like however, see with, in the meeting. So that's why I called twice. So that people are here. Okay, so I have 26 persons at Mister Yakov. Yakov, anybody else? Let me call, could I go back through who didn't answer?
Why don't you just ask people to, to, if, if they're, if they didn't answer, to mention their names?
That's true.
Well, the thing is, if they didn't hear or, you know, if they're muted, if they are muted and they thought they answered, they may think that the secretary has them. So it's better to just call the names one more time, but we don't ask.
Okay, I've got Mister Balberg. John Beckles. Celeste Chase. Tessa Hackett Viera. Why, oh, I was, I was. Abina Hatchful. Francisco Leopold. Michael Leiberg. Matthias Lindberger. Letwin Mavina. Vivian Morgan. Yankee Pearson. Yankee Pearson. Rouse Pierce. Hey, Phil Caddy. Felice Robertson. Rashida Skites. And Lauren Wosley. Mister Chair, 26 present.
You have Cheryl Wright here?
Yeah, yes, Cheryl Wright is here. I got her.
Okay, no, is she here? I didn't see her.
I thought I heard. I called her before I called Miss Wester Doll. I know.
I don't.
I don't think I heard her. Is she here?
I don't believe Miss Wright is present.
Okay, alright, sir. Stack corrected. Let me get her out, absent. Absent, go in the absent space. Hold on. So I have 25 people.
25?
Yes, and that gives us a quorum because we should have like 42. And 25 is more than half of 42 plus one.
Absolutely. Alright, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item two, the approval of the September 22 general board meeting minutes. Uh the minutes have been sent out to the board. Are there any corrections to be made to the minutes?
Mister Chair, I believe a correction needs to be made to, uh I believe it was Cheryl Wright's uh attendance being excused for September.
Okay, hold on a minute, let me make a nice note of that. September, you said, right?
Correct, yes. Additionally, I believe Latwinumavina should be excused.
For tonight or September?
For September, for September.
Okay. Latwin, Latwin. Right.
Correct. Alright, are there any other corrections to be made to the minutes? For a second time, are there any corrections to be made to the minutes other than those noted? Uh mine, I do see.
I wasn't present in September. I'm marked present.
You were.
No, that was September 28th. I was away.
Okay.
Board member with integrity, I love it.
Maybe I'm seeing the wrong, I gotta get some, change my glasses now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh are there any other corrections? Okay, hearing no other corrections, uh are there any objections to approving the minutes by a common consent? Hearing none, the minutes stand as adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now going to go on to committee reports. The committee reports have been submitted, uh and should be a part, should have been a part of the package that was uh sent out to the board. Uh we will hear a report from the Youth Services Committee this evening. Before we do that, are there any other chairs that have pressing uh announcements they need to make? And by pressing, I mean, I was, uh, you know, anything that's urgent and you need to keep your comments under one minute. Is anyone? Okay, hearing none. Uh I'll call on the Chair for Youth Services, Soul Query. Soul, you there? Yeah, Soul?
Okay. Maybe Dante, could you help her unmute sometimes and you mute us, we can't hear ourselves.
I'm asking her to unmute.
Okay, she just maybe away for a moment. So I'll tell you what, in the interest of time, we'll come back to her. Uh at this time, Dante, would you be able to give the District Manager a report?
Sure. Okay. Alright. Yes, okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh so, um I'm sure that many of you have, have seen the calendar invites going out. We're gonna try to start using calendar invites. Uh just as, just the way that we communicate with you all uh moving forward. So please, uh if you receive an in, a calendar invite from the Board Office, uh please accept it, right? That gives us notice that you're attending or you're not attending, so on and so forth. Uh but please, when you see those invites, uh accept them so that, you know, that will signify that, you know, we know that you're attending um the meeting or uh event. Uh next, on Wednesday, uh CB9, the Board Office, we're gonna be partnering with an organization called Cleanup Crown Heights. Um we are going to be cleaning up uh Empire Boulevard between Nostrand and McKiever, uh McKiever Place. Um if you're interested in uh joining the cleanup, all you need to do is show up. They will have uh gloves and trash bags available, but if you have your own, uh I would definitely encourage you to bring your own. Uh and definitely, if you have a headlamp, um please bring that with you. If you have multiple that you're willing to, to, to lend to uh someone, that would be helpful as well. Uh but again, uh we will be doing that cleanup that will start precisely at 6:30 and the meeting place will be Empire and McKiever Place and we will work our way back toward Nostrand. Um also, uh CB9 is going to be partnering with uh DCAST, the Department, Citywide Administrative Services to do a civil service 101 information session. That's gonna be on November 2nd, starting at 7:00 PM via Zoom. You can go ahead and go to our uh calendar if you're interested in learning about civil service or if you know anyone who's already part of, of city government and they're interested in taking a test. Uh I definitely would encourage you to, to send information their way. Uh we do have a flyer, so if you need a flyer, let us know. And it'll, it's also on our website and it went out in our weekly, in our weekly e-blast. Um but again, yes, that will be November 2nd, starting at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Uh and you can go ahead and go to our website to sign up to get the uh, the login information sent to you. Uh also, um I guess that was more for the chairs, but just note that, as you will probably see that the November schedule uh has shifted a little bit due to the holiday season. We know that folks travel uh early and through uh Thanksgiving holiday season and so um the schedule will shift a little bit, so just kind of expect that. Uh expect the same for December. Uh the meetings are definitely going to shift. Uh we want to try to be able to, to get all the committees uh who are, who need to meet uh in uh before the holiday season. Uh so just be, just be aware, uh look out on your calendars and emails that dates will likely change uh for November, definitely, and December as well. Um, let's see. Yes, so typically, um, just due to us moving this general board meeting, I have my district service cabinet, my district service cabinet will be in the morning, so I will meet with agency representatives regarding any issues that, you know, we've heard in the district office, major constituent complaints, and any themed issues that we're seeing in the district, so I will meet with them in the morning. I will just need to give a paper report, so I will send that out along with this report from tonight, so it's just packaged all in one thing, but just wanted to let you know that's gonna be tomorrow, if there's anything pressing that needs to be brought up, please send me an email now, or between now and nine AM, and I will make sure that I bring that up and report back to you. Um, also, I will be requesting an explanation for the fire that happened last week at Ebbets Field. That request is gonna go in actually in the morning because of the district service cabinet, once we get that information, I think that it's gonna be important as we roll into the the colder months and the holiday season, to be weary of, of what, you know, what we're doing in our apartments, especially like with space heaters. Um, there's a lot of compliance around those that a lot of people don't know, and so, uh, once we get that information back and we're able to determine, okay, what we need to disseminate information, or to hopefully prevent this from happening further, uh, we will reach out to board members, we'll set something up, but that's in the works, but once we get that report, you know, more will happen from there, a lot of talk has been happening about uh, changes in the U-LR process from the Citizen Budget Commission Report. Uh, that report is available already on our website, so if you go to the news section of our website, it's available for the public, please, I would implore everyone to take a look at it, read it in its entirety, I believe it's seventy-something pages. But definitely, it's there for you and for anyone else, so you can direct them to our website, along with the B forty-one bus presentation on Flatbush, that presentation also is on our website. So anyone who needs that presentation or has specific questions, I would definitely encourage them to go see the presentation first, and might answer their questions, but if not, they can reach out to the Board Office, and we will inquire with the Department of Transportation to hopefully find a, an answer to their question. I did want to provide an update, I know this was brought up, the Empire Reconstruction, uh, the completion date was scheduled for November seventh. It has now been delayed to December twenty-third. Apparently, this delay was a result of various field conditions, including inclement weather and ongoing coordination with surrounding construction. Also, um, restriping the existing bike lanes at the conclusion of the roadway restoration is included in the scope of that project. Uh, but the creation of new bike lanes or projected bike lanes is not. So I just wanted to give that update, because I believe that that came up last at the executive, also, you all, I believe, received an email from me regarding the Community Needs Assessment Survey. Um, if you received that email, I would definitely encourage you, anyone else that you know, anyone who's a part of an organization within Community Board Nine, fill out that Community Needs Assessment Survey, uh, you can go onto our website, we've added it to our website, if you go to the news section, definitely go on there and fill out that survey, and if you need more information, reach out to the Board Office, we can get that for you. And then the last thing that I have, is that the Neighborhood Advisory Board is having a hearing on November first, I believe, for Community District Nine. Um, received a flyer with a different date, uh, so just let us confirm, um, on their website, it has November first, and that hearing is gonna take place at the Crown Heights Library at five hundred New York Ave. Um, it will start at six-thirty, so six-thirty to eight PM, and then you can also join via Zoom. So if you need any more information regarding that, please reach out to the Board Office, but I definitely wanna encourage people to go onto the website and fill out the two thousand and twenty-two LSCD Community Needs Assessment. Um, it's, it's, it's just as imperative as all of the other things that we're filling out, trying to to get resources and funding to the community, right, for subsidy budgeting this as well, it, it really directs federal funding to, to our community, and so please, if you know of anyone, yourself, any, anyone who's part of an organization, fill that out, you can get that information on our website, and with that, that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much for that Dante.
Uh, I have, it's Warren. I know, I know, I blew it.
All right, we'll take a couple of questions, um, yeah, please use the raise hand function, we'll create a very brief speakers list, and, you know, we got a couple of questions for Dante. All right, uh, so Debbie, I do see you, Warren, did you want to speak as well?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I know that there's a procedure on this, but I know I have to present, and I have a meeting at nine, is there any way I could jump in with my stuff and then jump out, so that I won't be late for my meeting? I didn't know what time it was gonna be called, so I apologize.
Okay, um, all right, we'll put, all right, we'll put a hold on this for a moment, so let me just get the speakers list, so Debbie, I got you, Beverly, I got you, Teresa, I got you, and Warren, I have you as well, okay, uh, that's speakers list for the District Manager. We're going to pause momentarily, we're gonna go back to, um, item three, the Youth Services Committee Report. And then we'll come back and we'll get the questions.
All right, hi, everybody, um, just wanted to give you a quick report, um, so right now, we have, um, planned, and I know the members of the committee have agreed to want to participate and help form a youth summit that will be in conjunction with Faith in New York, it will be December tenth, um, twenty-twenty-two, at Temple Restoration, from twelve PM to six PM. Um, so we are committed and stated that we would like to participate in this, I know a part of what we wanted to make sure we incorporate in this is a job preparation workshop to have youth be ready for jobs, which may include some like resume, dressing for success, um, and interviewing skills, so that's something that we would like to participate in and and partner with CB nine to do. Um, in addition to that, we are working on getting, getting a family fun day where we would be inviting parents and their children to come and have fun with each other, as well as show like a mini film series where some youth films would be shown in the park, and then it would be like for adults kinda taking it to their youth with like double dutch, hopscotch, and then competing with their kids, like, you know, um, the potato sack race, three, three, um, three-legged race, and things like that, to have a good time and fun, so that we're having a great day for families to be together. Um, additionally, we want to, um, have a job and internship fair for the youth, and this would definitely be in conjunction with CB nine, and it would be around April, so that we are capturing the summer youth employment timeframe, where kids would be applying to that, and then the agencies, different agencies can all come together and do some recruitment and things like that, and we'd wanna have a job prep workshop right before that, so the kids are then um, prepared to interview and know how to present themselves well. Um, the other thing that we do is we're hoping and seeing if we could get the funding, um, it is sixty-five thousand to do an HBCU college tour, to go to ten colleges, taking thirty kids, twelve adults from Brooklyn down to Atlanta and back, so that's something we would like to pursue if we're able to get funding to do it. And the last thing that we did was, we had a participatory budget, um, info session and discussion with Ebony Smalls, who is a Community Nine Board Member, and she explained, um, what it was, and you know how we can get involved, and that would be the end of what I had to say.
Okay, thank you very much for the report, so for the event that I heard, I heard the, an event on twelve-ten, the Youth Summit?
Yes.
Heard it, her family fun day, is there a date for that?
Um, we haven't quite picked the date, but I believe we were thinking like around, um, May. Yeah.
All right, so it's just for May tend to do.
May or June, May or June.
Okay, May-June, um, I heard the job interview program, when was that gonna happen?
Um, we're wanting to do like twofold, so one, we wanted to see if what we encompassed in the youth summit, and then we wanted to do one right before April is when we're targeting to have the job fair, so we wanted to do one right before, so like March, so that they're prepared when they go to the, um, job fair.
That absolutely makes sense, okay, so I see a near-term action item for the twelve-ten, for the Youth Summit.
Yes, yeah.
What, are there any, what are the costs or resources required from the Board?
Well, right now, we don't have any costs, um, attached to it, um, most of what's happening, Faith in New York is taken care of, but yet, we're still doing some meetings, so I have to see if there is going to be any cost, but as of now, we don't have a cost for it, because a lot of it has been, um, you know, encompassed in what we're doing with Faith in New York.
Okay, so the only thing I would probably say is, I mean, I don't think there's any issue. Well, you know, I'll say, let me open the floor to questions about the event then, so if there's any questions on that, and then, then we can handle the approval, you know.
Okay.
All right, so are there any questions for the Youth Services Chair? I see Nicholas Alonore, I see Yakov Berman. Um, are there any other questions for her, after that, we're gonna close the floor, I'm gonna put myself on after that. Okay, Mr. Alonore, Rabbi Berman, and myself, and we close the floor.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, I just wanna address the family fun fair day. I think it's gonna coincide, or being close to, to the event we had last year, which is the CB nine Community Fair, which was designed to combine all these activities together, so what we had last year was a health fair, resource fair, family fair, and all this stuff, and I think that can be, bring into the family fun fair day, there's been discussion to designate the weekend or the Saturday after Memorial Weekend has the date to have a CB nine, uh, Community Fair. And I think probably, I will try to reach out to Ms. Cleary, to see if we could combine all these activities, because this is what we did last year. So, uh, instead of putting a family fair together and another fun day from one committee, we're gonna try to combine all of them together, because this is a tradition we're trying to establish. Every year, the weekend after Memorial Weekend, and that's, that's my proposition, is to have and then there we combine with all the committees, if, uh, the youth committee is gonna bring their particular aspect, jobs, employment, or whichever, the health committee will bring all the resources for the seniors and for the whole community at large, usually, what we did last year was to combine everything into one activity for Saturday, which is we are trying to designate the Saturday after Memorial Weekend.
So I think that if that's something that we want to do, we then have to think about where it's gonna be done, because there has to be enough space for all of those things, since we're trying to make sure that that day is a day of a lot of activities. So like, we were thinking like Robert McNair Park, which is right in our neighborhood, right here, if there's also a fair where it's tables and all different things there, then it might not leave enough space, so maybe we then have to think about where would be the best space, so that we could do, you know, I don't believe in collaboration, so if we're gonna do it, I guess we just have to pick a space that can accommodate everything that we wanna do on the same day.
Okay, Rabbi Berman.
That's what we did at what McNair Park, we only use half of the park, so there's a lot more space we can use.
I missed out, I mean, but I don't wanna necessarily go into a back, that's a conversation I have, we need to all have that in terms of both of those events and where we're going, but thank you for bringing that point up though, and we can start, um, Rabbi Berman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Youth Committee for all your incredible work. If you could, first of all, just wanna again make mention, I understand this is not a Community Board event, you're partnering, partnering with a third-party organization, so I get that, if you could, first of all, briefly address what is Faith in New York, who they are, and, and, I mean, how, how we got to them, and whether we have a history of working with them, briefly, and also just going forward, if, um, somebody's events, we could try to figure out a way to do them on another day besides Saturday, so we can have, uh, you know, it depends really on the event, but there are events where it would be Orthodox Jewish participation, and they're not able to participate in an event which takes place on a Saturday, Saturday.
Okay, um, so Faith in New York is a multi-faced, multi-issue, multilingual city-wide network of over seventy congregations, representing over eighty thousand residents in New York City. Um, they're committed to working for justice, faith-rooted community organizing, in order to influence policies and systems that will create a more just and equal New York for all New Yorkers, and, um, so, you know, we ended up partnering, and it is a partnership with CB nine and with the Youth Committee of what we're doing, and it ended up being coming together, because I was already working to, that was one of the goals, when I spoke to the people in the committee, we talked about having a youth summit, and then I had people who was also working with CB nine and other organizations that then talked about Faith in New York already starting the process of that. So I'm a big believer in like, don't reinvent the wheel, like, it's better to come together with other organizations, especially with money and resources, um, pulling it together, so that you can have a strong event. And so we ended up partnering with them, I mean, at this point, there's no way we can like change the date, you know.
I'm asking you to try to do it.
Okay, I just was making sure, okay.
I'm just saying, going forward, if we, if the Community Board does the events, we should consider that, so, so is it a local organ, are they, are they active locally, or is this event gonna be local?
Yes, it's a local event, they're active, no, there is like, it's a larger organization, but there's, you know, one, they have men, they're in different states, but they have a New York base, and so the, the area that we're gonna be in is Brooklyn.
Wait, this event is taking place where?
In Brooklyn.
In the district?
Um, they are on. Hold on. I believe it is in a district, but, um.
They're not located in the district, I don't think.
I don't know, well, not, no, not their, their thing, but the event, I believe, is in our district, so I have to look to go back. I could be wrong, though, so I have to, um, look at the address. It's at the Temple Restoration. Might be CB eight. Okay, any other questions?
All right, I did actually, that was actually one of my questions with respect to that, the venue. Uh, I, I think for CB nine to partner with them is not an issue, but I think it would be something that we would do actually in the district. Um, as opposed to we'll partnering things outside, so if there's any possibility with that, in terms of, you know, being able to find a site, and we can probably talk about that internally, see if there's something we can find that would work in that respect. And otherwise, you're saying that there's no other requirements for CB nine monetarily, at least, at least that we know it at this point?
Not at, not at this point right now, not at this point.
Okay, when is your, when is your deadline in terms of a final commitment needs to be given? Would we have time to get some of those details and get confirmation on price, or?
Um, well, there's another meeting that we have this coming Monday, so I can, um, you know, talk more about that, cuz I did mention it, but because they're still like, we're still like in planning stages, everything hasn't come together to say this is what we need for everything yet. So, um, I know we have a meeting on Monday. And I could bring that up.
Are we able to post, are we able to hold off, can we, cuz I think our schedule is gonna be, we'll be meeting a little bit earlier next month. Would you have the details, and would we be able to vote on it as the Board next month approve?
Um, I mean, sure, I guess I will, you know, I'll do whatever I can to get as much details in, and then, um, you know, give you what I have.
Mr. Chair, why do we have to vote on this? We've never historically voted, if we're not giving funding, it's an admin decision whether to use the logo of the Board and send it an email, this is, I, we've never voted on such a thing in the history of my five years on the Board.
Right.
Or longer, on the Board since two thousand, seven years on the Board.
Exactly, but that's one of the things, as a Board, we should be voting on these events, so that way we don't make sure they're scattered events that kind of have the Board's name on them, but we don't, and also, if we're voting on these things, that means we support them, which means the expectation is it goes on calendars, and it's not just necessarily.
Yeah, but it's an unnecessary burden on the Board. Yeah, but it's an unnecessary burden on the board and on 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 the committees. You're talking about sending out an email, advertising an event and putting on a logo. Voting just adds time and conversation, discussion, and I don't think other boards vote. I, this isn't the office decision. This is not even a board decision.
We voted on the park event that was held in.
There may have.
And that's something we're looking to make standard where, no, we vote on these things, so that way everyone is of one accord and we understand. Uh I did, I'm sorry, and I apologize, cuz Warren, I did say we were gonna hear you. I apologize for that. We skipped right over.
Hey, it's Warren. Um I was listening to Dante's report. I just want to suggest a change in how we look at things.
Uh Warren, I'm sorry, I apologize, cuz I I I I'm confusing list. You're on the list for Dante. We'll get to you in one second. We're just gonna conclude this and then we'll go right to that.
You got Naomi. Mr. President, Naomi.
I I called for the last one.
Oh, okay.
Uh we've gotta be faster. Naomi, do you have something very quick?
No, my very quick is that I have two children, I need to put to bed, and I need to do my report. So my thing is that I was gonna ask, when will my turn come up to talk about the education and library? I didn't know, no, I didn't hear, because I've been doing, I've been doing some other things, so I'm I'm just trying to figure out.
Understood, but we'd already called for reports from Chair. Do you have an announcement you need to make very quickly?
No, if you already called for my my announcement and you didn't see my, what I had to do. Then I just, I guess the board would just have to see my minutes from when you, when you distribute it, right?
Correct.
No, that's it, that's it. You have a, thank you so much.
Alright, so just um for mine, um the address is five one five Dean Street, Brooklyn. Is where the event is taking place, so I do have that. Alright.
Okay.
Are there any other questions of me? Cuz I'm gonna have to sign out.
Uh any other questions? Alright, hearing none.
I have a question. Are you collaborating with the um the Education and Library Committee on anything that you wanna do? Where we can help each other out, because we're dealing with the youth? That's my question.
Well, I mean, we haven't talked about that. I know that that was something I brought up with you in the past, but that ha- it hasn't gone past that initial discussion.
Well, what um my thing is that um we can discuss that offline whenever, when, oh, okay, Mr. Chair, I get it, goodbye.
So that'll be a conversation offline, but um but thank you for that. So uh so let's talk offline. We'll see what your deadlines are, whatever you support you need, and we'll see if we can get it ready for the board to consider for next month.
Okay.
So let's talk offline.
Thanks, everybody. Alright, bye, everybody.
Okay, alright, uh we're gonna go back to order. We are now going to go to the questions for the District Manager. Uh so I had a list that we had taken. Debbie, I see you first. Beverly, Ms. Wester doll, and we close on Warren. Okay, Debbie, go ahead.
Hi, so Dante, um in terms of the uh tree planting issue. Uh I guess you can bring that up at your District Service Cabinet Meeting. And also the mayor has a million tree initiative in place. All of that information is on the Parks Department website. So, you know, I suggest that people take a look at these and that information. But Dante can bring it up then as well. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um Dante, I don't know um if this is something that you can discuss. But I think it's important when you have all of them in the same room, that have the conversation with them in regards to their communication with the community. Right now, it's difficult to get in touch. If you're not a agency like the Community Board. It's difficult for you to talk to another agency. That's why we're looking at tree pits in places where we don't need tree pits. That's why we're looking at scaffolding that's been up for ten fifteen years, because those agencies don't talk to regular people. So I don't know if there's a point in your meeting where you can have that discussion, but I'm asking you to have it if you can.
Most certainly, definitely heard.
Thank you.
I agree.
Beverly, I think a lot of these things, these issues need to be, they need to be a paper trail, and that's not happening.
But there is a paper trail to um Debbie.
Come back to order. We. We'll make sure we're good. But thank you though. Alright, Ms. Wester doll.
I just want to ask about the um Community Needs Survey that uh I wanna send it out to people. But I'm un- it's unclear, are people supposed to submit proposals for their organizations now? Or is it more a survey of like ideas that people have like a questionnaire?
Yes, so it, from my understanding, it will ask you specifically, so I would say more like a questionnaire. But it asks you specifically, like, what type of resources have you used in, you know, your household in the past? Six months, and it will list like thirty, and it will have you, you know, pick which ones, you know, that you're using. And so, you know, all households are different, and it comes in multiple languages. I think I'm looking at it right now. It looks like it's over. Fifteen, about fifteen languages. Um it does have Haitian Creole, which is good as well. So, you know, it comes in multiple languages. Um listen, the link is right on our website, so please send it out if you can. If you can, please send it out.
Yeah, I was looking for it. I I couldn't, I couldn't find it, and I sent an email to ask for it just just a moment ago, so. I'll send it out as soon as I get it. I just wanted to know if it was more of us, like, when do people send out the? To get money for their specific programs, like, like a school or something. Is that, what is that?
Uh are you talking about participatory budgeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so right now, uh participatory budgeting is active. So any person who has an idea about what they think some type of capital expenses needed in the district. They can go onto the City Council website, um participatory budgeting. Um our council members uh fortunately um are participating, so both uh Rita Joseph and Crystal Hudson are both participating. And so any ideas that you have or any ideas that anyone has, they can really go on there and submit literally those ideas. And I think that the submission for ideas ends in November, and then they start the vetting process.
Alright, thank you for that clarity. I really appreciate it.
No problem.
Actually, I would say it's a little bit tighter timeframe. I thought it was supposed to end in October, wasn't it? And and I just say that to say that the deadline might have passed, they might still be taking, but don't wait until November to submit, because you might be behind.
Yeah, if you can do it now, do it.
Yeah, so you know, sooner rather than later, they might still be taking them, even though the deadline has passed. But we'll make sure that it's something that there's urgency on that, when we communicate it out. Alright, um okay, Warren, we see you.
Hey, uh it's Warren. I just wanna suggest to Dante to change your perception. Um and I say this constructively, in terms of Evans Field and the fire. I don't think it's, I think the first question is not how to use uh heaters safely. But why isn't the landlord supplying enough heat? Okay.
Space heaters. The landlord gets tenants' space heaters.
Right, but that's not, but but, you know.
I agree with you.
It's very important that why isn't there enough heat that people have to use space heaters? So if you could pursue that tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, um. Alright, I see three hands up. We will take those for the board uh for the. For the District Manager. So I see Ms. Baptiste, I see Rome, Ms. Rome Perry, and I see Mr. Pruitt, and we're gonna end on Mr. Pruitt. No more hands after that.
I'm so sorry. But yeah, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chair. Um I just want to tell you, Dante, that um you and your staff do a phenomenal job. Anytime that I do ask for information, you give it to me. You assist me in my volunteer position. And I thank you for just being and doing your due diligence to help me be a better volunteer for Community Board now. So I just wanna say thank you to you, Mia, and our new um um attend, uh new person, Mr. Jamar. Thank you so much for being on my meeting minutes, because you were very helpful. Everything went smooth. Um unfortunately, I did not hear the role for me to say my minutes, so I can't bless the rest of the community. With what was going on, but I just wanna say thank you for being who you are as the people that work behind me. To make a better community in Brooklyn of Community Board now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Ms. Rome Perry.
Yes, uh good evening, everyone. Um I just wanted to um. I sent Dante offline. Uh we can discuss a few pointers that, you know, um as I always complain. This end of the district get no love. So um I just wanna ensure that, you know, we have a little discussion, some of the ideas. Dante, if you can, uh bring it up at your meeting. It well appreciated. We do have, you know, a lot of seniors at this end. I'm not sure. We have a Walgreens at the corner of um Utica and Midwood Street. A lot of four seniors, forty percent of four seniors um in the district uh get their um medications there. That Walgreen is closing. And um as of the fifteenth of uh November. They would have to either bus it or get a ride to go down to Church Avenue. And that's that, that's a schlep for some people. Um you know, we're gonna have to try and see how best we can, some of the younger folks can assist them in. Us getting their medications, but um that's one of the issues that we're having at this side. At at some point, um you know, we'd like to engage our city council and other people to set up a meeting. Because there are a lot of other quality of life issues that um needs to be addressed. And um you know, it is getting to be the winter time, and it's gonna be difficult for seniors to be traversed. And from here all the way down church and, you know, other issues that we're having. So I'd appreciate if um you have the time, Dante, we could speak offline before your meeting. Thank you.
Hey, this is Warren. I just wanna interject one thing here. There's a whole bunch of these store closings going on uh from Stop and Shop, even though it started in our district. But it's an important food market uh to to the retail drugstores are really retrenching. And I think that's something that has to be really looked at. Uh you know, in terms of Yunnella's area, I certainly feel for her, but it's not just there. Uh it's everywhere. And we really have to take a look, why is this happening? And what's the responsibility of these major chains to supply communities with their retail goods? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Naomi. Um how how would I be able to partner with Ms. Yunnella to get the youth? Um the Education and Library Committee, wait, the Education and Library Committee to help with the seniors. Um because we can be willing to work, uh put that out there with the committee. To see if we can get some young people involved from the schools in that area, probably to help some of the seniors. So how can we help with that situation?
I can make this very easy. Uh Naomi, uh do I have permission to share your email address with Yunnella?
Yes, you do.
Yunnella, can I share your email address with Naomi?
Yes, and uh uh thank you, Naomi. Um and you know, I just say, I had Beverly. And also um mentioned some of her or um, you know, young people working with seniors as well. Um you know, be where us, the Housing Committee, we I'm on, we share, you know, some of our plights that we're having. So I'd appreciate the help, and yes, we can all partner together. That's why we're all here, and thank you so much for the offer.
Thank you for accepting. Have a nice night.
Uh we will see and close on Mr. Pruitt.
Uh you're muted, Mr. Pruitt. There you go. Yes.
Uh I like um, I like, I got a few questions as it relates to participatory budgeting. Uh first off, um. The the funds that we're talking about, and we, I I hear we have a million dollars to. To distribute or or to put behind a project, the funds we're talking about. Differ how from any one city council person's budget to to do neighborhood improvements? Is it, is it, is it the same dollars or 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 are the? It it, for example, Rita Joseph, wh- what, the amount of money that she has as a councilman to to make. Improvements, how does that differ from the one million dollars in a participatory participatory budget?
It's the same pool.
It's the same.
Yes, same call.
And and anything that that you propose that has to be done. That that you, that you, you you deem to be be uh pursued as a project. It has to be uh public, government-owned property? So so there is a uh an MTA substation where they do repairs. And the parking lot of the Wendy's at the corner of uh Flatbush. And uh Ocean and Empire. Uh and and there is a clock tower at the top of that building. That is on the MTA side of the building. Does the, does the MTA, is the MTA considered uh city property? Because what I, what I, what I, what I would like to do is, is is spend that money restoring that clock tower. It would be a hell of a entrance to the neighborhood. And it would be, it would be, it would be such 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 an icon. It could be like. The way uh the Waversburg Clock Tower used to be back in the day. Uh we, people would come down Flatbush heading south, and they would, it would be a four-sided clock. And uh and I, and 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 that's, so so I I'm gonna put in for that. And uh anyway, um I I just, I just thought that I just wanted to make clear that. The, that it's not a private, in in a private business, the private businesses were also. Eligible to be con- included in these uh participatory budget plans.
Private businesses, from what I understand, no. But here's what I would tell you to do. Submit your idea, and if it's disqualified, it's disqualified, but just admit, cuz they'll let you know one way or another, or if there's ways to make it fit in in the criteria.
And also, also, is this done every year? Every, every year there's a participatory budget?
It's at the discretion of the council members, so they may opt to do it one year and they may not another. But typically, I think uh it's probably gonna be something that they'll continue to do.
Right, could I say something, honey?
Uh very, very.
Mr. Pruitt, if even if it doesn't go, i- i- if if the million dollars can't be handled it, they could push it to the capital fund. But they would direct queue and we're to find out. So you push it.
Alright.
And 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 just very quickly with respect to that, um the idea is put the idea out, because then sometimes they might be able to pull funds. So it might be some of it comes from the council member and participatory budgeting, and they might be able to find pools. And from what I understand, they could even do it over a couple of years if necessary, so. But the main thing is, don't, don't wait, don't worry about that part. Just put the idea out.
Alright, alright, alright.
They have, they have special staff who can help figure out how to make it work.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you. Um it's um, the thing is that I wanna ask is that with the participat-. Participatory budget. Yeah, the participatory. yeah, the participatory budget, if it's going out to the public, can we as uh Community Board members ha- um let other people know in the community that it's happening if you're on like let's say for example, a PTA or something, so they can know, find out, okay?
Because uh the deadline was supposed to have been this month. Um I spoke with a council member and she said that they are still taking, but I don't think it's you know, don't wait like, you know, three or four weeks, so if you have people you would like to to put in, encourage them to submit right now.
Oh, okay, cuz no, cuz I'm on the seat, the the District Seventeen C E C as well, so I wanna make sure I have the right information before I give, I say that I'm giving it out or the community's giving it out. Because I don't think everybody's aware of how important this money is for the community, so before I put my name on it and show it out to parents where it can be conducive for the district schools on its budget for ideas, I just wanna make sure I have the right information before I do that, so that's why I'm asking, so thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh we're gonna cut it off, Suki, do you have a question for Dante, last one?
Just very quickly to Milford, for private properties for historic restoration, the best option is for the property owner to apply for state or national historic register designation, they can then get a whole bunch of tax credits, possibly loans, um you know, but ta- talk to the historic preservation organizations, they can help you.
Okay.
It has to be the property owner though who applies for it.
Okay, alright, Suki, thank you very much.
Yeah, and Brooklyn Commons is the organization that there's that's there right now, just to save me some time.
Right.
Alright, alright, thank you very much for that, um for all the questions as well, thank you Dante for your report. We do have one modification, I would, you know, unless there's an objection, I have one modification I would like to make to the agenda. Uh we neglected to put the treasurer's report and he would like to address the board for a couple of minutes just to to get uh provide some status on on the treasury. Uh is there any objections to that?
I don't object, but I request that we limit the reports to um three minutes and um move forward with the agenda.
Uh just that one report and then I have my uh chair's report, that's it.
Right, so I'm requesting if remaining the agenda to limit reports, I mean, he's gonna send it all email to us anyway, right?
Uh it'll be included as part of the re- of the minutes and there'll be a.
Let's limit the reports to three minutes to talk about the important items and move on to you.
Eating up time, so let's let Christian go and then I'll keep my report as brief as possible.
You asked my objection, that was my objection.
Alright, um thank you, Mister Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh I'll be I'll be under three minutes, so just wanna give three quick updates, first one is the Budget Literacy Workshop, that's something that I talked about when I was running for this role in June. Um with thanks to Dante for reaching out to New York Civic Engagement Commission, we're in the process of scheduling that. Um we are looking at November twenty first at six P M, but we still have to confirm that with the the nonprofit New York Civic Engagement Commission, so please be on the lookout for that. Uh but we are continuing to work to make that happen so that you can ask any questions that you have about community board budgets, participatory budgeting, et cetera, et cetera. Uh the second thing is on the community board budget itself, uh no new news from City Hall in terms of a potential cut of three percent this year. Um so we're continuing to uh behave and 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 operate as if that is a possibility. So in October, we have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for personnel expenses, forty five thousand dollars of that has been spent, that leaves us with hundred and seventy four thousand dollars for this budget year, budgetary year. Uh O T P S, which is other than Personnel Services, we have forty three thousand dollars in the budget. We've spent five thousand dollars um already. And um I I should add that we received ninety five hundred dollars from city council members. Um that money is important because if there is budget cuts, then that provides a little bit of a cushion. Um and then lastly, in terms of rent, we have budgeted a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We've already obligated sixty four thousand dollars and we have uh thirty one thousand dollars already expensed, so you can find more details on this in the monthly budget summary report. We, I know the district office sent that out in September, I'd be grateful if the district office could send that out um for October as well. And then uh we don't have any major expenditures of more than three thousand dollars anticipated for the next thirty days, so that's the budget, and then the last thing I would just say very briefly is that um Warren was very gracious with his time and joined me in a meeting with Albany uh last week to discuss Friends Of and we got a lot of work to do. Uh we're working on it, it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a long time, uh but we are working on it to make that happen in terms of.
To discuss what? To discuss what?
We're working to help uh restart an adjacent nonprofit, a nonprofit that would operate adjacent to C B nine. Um there's no further, there's not much more to report at this time, other than I have a lot of work to do to get documentation in order and to work with Albany to make that happen, so I just wanna keep you up to date to let you know that we're working on it. Um please be patient, it's gonna take some time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh are there any questions for, we'll take two questions for the treasurer. Okay.
Why would um the board, I mean, why why would uh co- community board number nine need a nonprofit that isn't already covered eh from an activity level under our current committee structure, what I mean, what what is what is the agenda of the nonprofit that you're creating that differed so much from the uh from the committees of the C B nine?
Thank you for the question, so um some community boards in New York have these nonprofits. They are separate from the community board, just like ours will be, but they operate in a way to help uh supplement the community board budget because the money that we get from the city is very limited and uh we have to spend it in a certain amount of time on a certain type of thing, so some community boards across the borough and across the five boroughs have these nonprofits set up so that they can um receive and and provide more resources to our community, so that's the intent behind it.
So you're 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 a finan- you're a financing structure uh eh 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 is it word, you're you're I mean, you're a financing structure or or do you, will you have an agenda like a nonprofit that's gonna be focused on this problem or that problem, eh eh uh you you get what I'm asking? I mean.
I think those are, those are good quest- those are good questions, Milford, but right now uh right now, we gotta have a lot of work to do in terms of just getting documentation to Albany. So the agenda, that's something for I think four to five months from now for the Board of Directors of Friends Of to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, Suki, we see you. Your question.
Um so from your report and and thank you for your report, Christian, it sounds like the board is spending about ten thousand dollars a month on rent for our office on Nostrand and Carroll. I know many of you um who are older members are familiar with that office. And um I'm wondering when our lease is up uh to be renewed or renegotiated because that does seem to me like an area where we could save a significant amount of money and apply it um to other purposes for the community.
I agree a hundred percent, Suki, um I believe that the lease is up, it's twenty four or twenty five, I can confirm. Um but I think that it's twenty five.
Thanks, that's a good.
Alright, um and with that, we are going to, Ms. Moses is depressing or can we move on?
I I just have, um well, I wanna uh wanna just say something in reference to y- your mind, first of all, um right quick. Um the community board does not accept like donations and stuff coming in, it it definitely has to be separate in in its entirety from the community board. Um so if you look at the charter, you'll see that you're not allowed to do that, if any money goes like into our organization, it has to go through the city who who again gives us back the money. So what he's talking about, it has to be totally separate from the community board. We 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 were not allowed to accept monies like that. And the second thing I wanted to say is that I don't remember getting a a with report, did you send out a report to everyone or no?
Thank you, Ms. Moses. I did send out the budgetary snapshot, uh but I think, you know, the in the midst of inquiries and um agendas and attachments, we may have neglected to send that out to board members, but I did send that. And um I can get with the district office offline to make sure that you all have that.
Yeah, cuz I'm just saying, what we're we're normally used to getting is a, I mean, you we can see it like what subject it comes out of, cuz everything is labeled. So we would know how much you were spending, we would get those reports on a monthly basis, cuz basically, you're kinda overseeing what's going on in the district office.
Yes, so I'll get with the district office and I think, I think, like I said, you know, it was sent out in September, I think it was just um an accident that we didn't get it out this month, but we'll get it out too, thank you.
Yeah, it will go out, it'll go out with my report.
Right, because he's basically overseeing the district office to ensure that the money is 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 properly uh going through as it should.
Yes, correct, it's gonna go out with my report, since my district services in the morning, all that stuff will go out after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you, uh thank you very much. Um we are now gonna move on in the agenda to the chair's report. Okay, so my report, I'm gonna try and keep it very brief uh this month, I think a number of items have already been covered in in different reports. Uh but just with respect, uh so one, first of all, I wanna talk about the monthly hearing format. So last month was the first month that we've done it, uh so we're making, uh you know, I don't wanna thank everyone for your patience and for working with it as well. So um you know, we're we're continuing to to fine tune the process. Uh we've been receiving feedback and processing, so it looks like, you know, we're gonna continue making adjustments to the hearing. Uh one of the things I think that we we realize is that we don't wanna have too many issues crowding the agenda for the hearing, so we're gonna be limiting um the hearing topics, you know, for the month to one topic that the public will have an opportunity to speak on. Uh and I think we had tried uh momentarily to see if we could do S L A applications as part of that hearing. Uh but as you can see this month, one of the adjustments we're doing is moving it back into the um to the public session of the meeting and we will continue to process it from that way. Uh but but with that, it's it's this is a learning process, so we are looking for feedback from members and from the public. Uh and we'll try our best to incorporate it uh in ways that that make the most sense. Uh and engage, you know, and get really what the purpose of of this is, is uh commentary from the public on things that affect the district. Uh statement of needs, uh so that's being processed, uh understanding, so you know, you know, we definitely wanna make, uh you know, we've heard the feedback from this evening. Uh we wanna make sure we improve the process, so the district office, uh the district manager is going to be working on that uh for this process and going into the next one, to make sure that we're taking the feedback and and making better, the process better, stronger and we're getting better engagement as well. Uh but again, so um you know, as we have a deadline that's coming up, we still encourage if you have information, if you have information, if you have testimony you'd like to provide, so please make sure you send that to the district office. Uh I did wanna very briefly address uh the board and the committee, uh and I think the district manager already talked about it. Uh but these months have been crazy between, you know, religious observances. Uh November and December are are going to be more of the same in terms of, there's going to be a lot of um of a of juggling of 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 days uh because of the holiday season. Uh so we ask that everyone, please, make sure you're in communication and you're paying attention to your emails and to the calendar invites. And note that your committee may not meet at its usual time, so please, uh we're trying to get those dates out in advance. Uh please do the best of your ability, make sure you are uh working with your chairs uh to accommodate and to try and make sure you're there uh so the committees can meet as 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 is required. Uh I definitely wanna make a note um in terms of the district office and the conversations I've had. Attendance, we we need to, we need to really keep an eye on this. Um I understand they're conflicting schedules, I understand everyone is busy. But we still need for everyone to make sure they're showing up to their assigned places, their assigned committees and to the board meetings. Uh obviously, if life happens, we understand. Please make sure you're communicating and we'll do our best to work with you, but we also need to make sure that the committees are able to function and the board is functioning. So please uh so please make sure you're watching your attendance. Um budget request forms, so we're asking, you know, uh you know, we're starting to get to the point where we wanna start understanding in terms of what the needs of committees are going to be. Uh you know, the treasurer has spoken in terms of the the work he's doing. There's going to be some time that, you know, in terms of setting up structures, but we also wanna have an idea in terms of uh money that may be required, so if we need to start having conversations in advance uh with outside parties, we wanna be able to start that process. Uh so I would ask for definitely as you go back to your committee meetings, make sure you're talking about events. Uh the more heads up notice, the better. If you say it's gonna be next week, it's gonna be hard to support. If you say, give yourself sixty to ninety days heads up time, it's something that's more workable and we can fi- find out how best to support and provide resources for that. Uh so I would ask that please do that, if anything, I probably think it's it's in the best interest, even though if it's events that are far ahead to try and get those done, hopefully include that as part of the agendas for next month, for for November. Understanding what events potentially you might wanna do and start putting placeholders in terms of the numbers. So that way we can get it to the district manager, we can get it to the treasurer and see what we can actually support. Um we are gonna be continuing hybrid meetings, uh so the mayor actually extended the uh the the state of emergency through the month of November, so we will be meeting for some period of time virtually, but we're gonna be having conversations about eh what sense does it make sense to go uh back in, where we can go back in. Uh and and especially given, uh I I think every time we watch the news, you hear of a new variant or you hear of a new health threat. So we're definitely keeping eyes on that, trying to make sure that we're keeping the board safe. Uh but also that way it's to operate uh in in an effective and efficient manner and advocate for the for part of district. Um I did wanna make notice, uh you know, I wanted to say it, uh the Civil Service one oh one event that we're doing, I I wanted to thank the district office for working with D C A S. Uh I I think that, you know, especially if we're talking about empowering people, empowering the district, uh we know, you know, I I know from the city service that there are a lot of jobs that are out there. So for people who are looking for jobs, uh the civil service uh process can sometimes be daunting. This is a great opportunity, if you know of anyone who's looking for work or looking to transition to city service, this will be a great opportunity to ask questions to understand the process and to to see, you know, if there's any careers that might interest you during the city service. Uh so again, that'll be in November. Um I also wanted to make very quick mention of of two um street co-namings that happened uh in this district uh that were very significant, uh the first one was for um our past treasurer who passed away, Ben Edwards. Uh so the corner of Maple and Flatbush was uh designated in Ebenezer Edwards Way. Uh place the way, I can't recall, but but I wanted to call attention to that as he he was a member of C B nine, he was leadership of C B nine. Um and you know, his death was untimely and sad, uh but we're happy that they were able to commemorate his service, his long service in this district in that way. Uh and I also wanted to call attention to the re- street renaming of uh Eastern Parkway and Utica to Erz Pierre Way. Um Mister Pierre um had died on that corner, uh police related incident, he had a mental health crisis. Um and police, there was a police involved shooting with that and and he died. Um the family brought the matter to uh council member Hudson and to the C B nine in terms of um trying to find a way to memorialize him and also to to really kinda keep um you know, make sure that there's a reminder of the the necessary conversations around mental health. So that came to fruition, I was able to attend on behalf of C B nine. The family was absolutely um, you know, thankful for for our consideration and participation in that process. Um but I just wanted to share that with the board and and the district. Uh last uh last month, we had also talked about bylaws amendment proposals. So um there were a number of proposals that were submitted, there were some additional proposals that had also been submitted and those were distributed to the board. Um so we are still in the process of of figuring out, going through those and really trying to figure out what the best way would be to proceed in terms of that. Um in terms of being able to process, have the conversations and if necessary, come to conversa- uh to actual votes to amend the bylaws. So that is a conversation that's continuing. Uh as we are still in the process of trying to go through that, if there are members who still have amendments they would like to propose, that is an option as well. I believe that the portal might be closed, I I will check with the district office if we are able to reopen that. Uh but barring that, we will find, figure out some way in terms of you'll be able to submit so that way they can be considered by the board as well. Um so and we'll have additional news uh on that when the the executive committee meets next to discuss. Uh that is all I have uh at this time, uh so that concludes my report, I have no action items for informational purposes. Uh at this time, we'll entertain a few questions. Okay, if you have any questions, please use the raise hand function. Westerall, I see, let me just take a speaker's list very quickly. Ms. Westerall, I see you. Hold on a second. Ms. Zersky, I see you as well. I'll take your question. Hold on. Okay, I see Ms. Westerall, Ms. Zersky. We're going to close on those with, I want to make sure we're able to move to the rest of the items very quick. Ms. Westerall, you have the floor.
Just quickly for the bylaws, I wanted to submit something and it was closed down. But also I noticed in what I was sent out today, I, I had trouble viewing the, the bylaws and I wondered if it's, is it, is the new submissions that people put in on that? Or is it just what you had from before, the documents? It seems like there's an Excel, it's like maybe a Excel spreadsheet as well as a PDF for that.
Oh, okay.
I, I just want to view them and I want to know if it's, if it's any changes to it because if the new submissions that people put in are in that document or not.
Right, the bylaws, there's no changes to the bylaws themselves. So everything is proposed as it states, so the bylaws have not been amended. There's no changes.
I know the document though.
Right, the, the Excel spreadsheet, there were four additional amendments that were added. So one of them is actually a proposal that is an expansion on a proposal that you already received, so it's not a new one. It's just a slight change on one of them. And then there were three additional amendments as well, if I recall, if I'm counting correctly. There are three.
So those are your, your, your changes or were they other people submitted them to you?
Who are submissions from other board members?
All right, I, 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 I just got it today and I, I couldn't see it for some reason, so I'll, I'll try again.
Okay, if you have any issues, the, the district office can probably resend it to you.
Okay.
Uh, Meg?
Hi, thanks for your report. I had, I had two questions, two quick questions. One is just a, a sort of a clarification about, you know, having our hearings around specific topics. I heard a lot of feedback about the trees tonight and was wondering if we were going to plan on following up on that, digging into that for the next session. And I'm not, I'm just curious about how those topics are getting set to be discussed. And then my second question is actually, as a new, as a new member, is the expectation that every committee is holding an event? Or is it, I just wasn't, actually that wasn't clear to me and maybe I missed part of an orientation around that. But is that the expectation? Because I heard you on the fact that we need to get our budgets prepared and have a proposal soon. And I want to make sure that our committee is working towards that in a clear way.
Right, sure. No, no, there's not an expectation that you absolutely, well, yeah, I'll take the second one first. There's no expectation that as a committee you absolutely have to do an event. But the only things we're saying is that if the committee is contemplating that, it's better to think about it before rather than too late. So that way, if there's any resources or anything we need, you know, we can have that conversation upfront. But there's not an expectation, there's not a requirement for the committee to do it. So if there are issues you want to do, if there's advocacy, if there's town halls or, you know, or, or, you know, different kinds of outreach, that's fine. It doesn't necessarily have to be an event like that. So that's the second question. The first one for, for meeting topics, correct? Okay, meeting topics, it depends, it depends. I think for this month, we specifically had the, the statement of needs that we needed to be done because that's one of those mandatory ones that we have to do as a board. Last month was with respect to the CBC document because we thought that was something topical and urgent. So we wanted to start getting that. But that really will probably end up being a function of if, if the community has topics they would like to see Florida have testimony on. Or if there are major initiatives that we want to make sure that we get public information on. For example, one of the things that I, you know, we will probably be talking about is they are, they are rethinking the, the Flatbush Avenue corridor with respect to the B forty-one. So as that goes through our district, that is probably very, in the near future, going to be a topic that we're going to look at. And there'll probably be additional topics as well, but absolutely, and we, we, you know, we welcome feedback in terms of if you have topics you would like to see introduced. Where we have a public hearing, we can discuss that as well in terms of when it makes sense. Did I answer your question?
I think so. Sorry, I just want to make sure I was, I'm on two different devices. Um, yeah, I, I, so how do we submit those topics? Is that something we submit to, to Dante in advance or how do we make sure? Because I, I hear a lot of like, we talk about things and then we don't wind up following up or having full discussions on them as they get presented. And I just, I'm not sure sort of what the mechanism is to, to like, make sure that we're, we're creating time for that kind of follow-up.
Right, no, absolutely. So for topics, that, that stuff can go to the district office, to Dante and the, and the team in the office. And you know, but, but you know, I just to, to, you know, to also say, it's like some of the, the topics that I know that they come up. The city is not exactly known for being lightning fast on some of these. So sometimes a little bit of turnaround in terms of getting the responses. But, but I do want to just say, at least on behalf of the, the team, I do know they're working on these things and I ask them these questions as well. So these things don't go away. It's just a matter of sometimes the turnaround time and the making the connections and getting the answers takes a moment. But, but please, I mean, absolutely, if you haven't heard from something, you can reach out to, you know, myself, you can reach out to the team and find out if there's a status. Otherwise Dante and the team are on it and they'll provide a status as soon as they get by. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Absolutely welcome. Okay, so that completes that. We are now going to move on in the agenda to the voting items. So for this evening, we have two voting items, SLA applications. The applications we are considering this evening are for Glow NYC at four oh six Rogers Avenue. It's an application for the renewal of a wine, beer and cider license. And we have Silver Ice, five seventy-five A Flatbush Avenue. And that is also a renewal of a wine, beer and cider license. At this time, I will entertain a motion to put those two matters on the floor for consideration by the board.
Motion to approve both those applications.
Again.
Okay, I have a motion by Yakov Berman to approve both those renewals.
A letter, a motion to provide a letter of support for both those renewals.
Okay, duly noted. And I heard a second from Mr. Almanor that.
Yes, that's correct.
A second from Mr. Almanor. Okay, all right, so at this time, are there any questions with respect to the motion? For a second time, are there any questions with respect to the motion to send letters of approval for those two applications?
What exac, what exactly are the crossroads of each business?
Sure. So Glow and, and Primo, if you're still there, correct me if I go wrong, it's Glow NYC. It's on Rogers Avenue on the corner of Sterling.
That sounds right to me.
Okay, and then Silver Ice is at Flatbush Avenue between Midwood and Maple.
Yes, that also sounds important to me. Thank you, Fred.
And, and what kind of, what kind of cuisine is a silver rice or Japanese?
Correct, that's correct, Mr. Fred.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Sure thing.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we are going to call the roll on the motion. Madam Secretary?
You're muted, Linda.
For or against? Okay, Kyrie Ali?
Wait, not, not for or against, just, just for or, okay, whatever.
Yeah, okay. Kyrie Ali? Kyrie Ali? Okay, Nicholas Almanar?
In favor.
Sure, Bob Berg? Right, Baptiste?
Yes.
Naomi Baptiste? John Beckles?
Naomi Baptiste is present.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Yakov Berman?
Yes.
Warren Burke?
Yes.
Hold on. Augustine Blackwell? Suki Chang?
Yes.
Hold a minute, hold one. Suki, yes.
Of impulse.
Hold one minute. Celeste Chase, I know I forgot to, Celeste Chase? Claire, sorry. Claire? Okay, Saul is not there. Jamie Estee?
In favor, yes.
Thank you. Matthew Fulton?
In favor.
Pardon me?
In favor.
Thank you. Bishop Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. Primo Lozano?
Yes.
Mia?
Mina? Mina, yes, in favor.
Courtney?
In favor.
Kristen Lebo? Kristen?
Yes, I'm in favor. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. Harry?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Newsom? Beverly Newsom?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Puay?
For.
Thank you. Yuna from Perry?
Yes.
Rashida Siddique?
Yes.
Debbie Timothy?
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, yes. Ms. Westerall? Teresa Westerall?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, those are, those are all present. Kyrie Ali?
Not called.
Hold on, hold on. Kyrie Ali? Dexter Roberts?
I vote yes.
My name was not called.
Oh, you know, come. Yep, Francisco Leopold? Francisco? Right.
Yes.
Thank you, Francisco. One last time for Kyrie Ali. Augustine Blackwell, is she still there?
Answered yes, the first time you called my name.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I got it right.
No problem.
Okay, Saul, are you still there? First, okay, I don't hear Saul neither do I hear Kyrie. I'll give you the total in a minute.
Did all board members hear their name called?
I did call all board members. My vote is twenty-four. Because I didn't hear Kyrie, not Saul. And so there, there will be two less than my attendance.
Yeah, just make that notation. Twenty-four in favor, motion passes. The letter of support will go out for both those applicants. Okay. All right, so those are the only voting items I had. Is there any unfinished business for the board to take up at this time?
I just want to know how come Warren Burke and, and Francisco. They got her under Warren Burke.
Don't ask questions, Ms. Moses. Don't ask questions.
Wait, could you say that again? Pat heard my name.
You're being bad, Pat. You're being bad.
No, but I'm looking at, y'all looking at it too?
I repeated it, Ms. Moses.
I mean, I thought I was under the radar here, so.
Pat, you're looking for trouble.
Of course.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Okay, all right, here we go. Finished this. Is there any new business for the board to consider?
Yeah, excuse me. I, I'm starting a project to count the number of restaurants, bars and barber shops and salons in the neighborhood that are not compliant with the American With Disabilities Act. The reason I'm doing this is I recently came down with Parkinson's disease and one thing that happens when you have Parkinson's is that you can't raise your feet up well. There are a number of restaurants, saloons, I mean, salons, barber shops, nail places that have a, a huge slab at the bottom of the door. And, and, and that is a restaurant, that, that's ADA non-compliance because you can't enter it. The strollers can't go over there. I walk around with a walker. But, but, but more importantly, you can't, you, it, it, it just, it just, it is a puzzling issue. When you consider that restaurants tend to make more money when they are more compliant, more, more amenable to handicap. And so, so what I want to do is, I can ask the entire board is, because I can't get around that much, but as you go through the neighborhood and as you go through the vicinity, shopping, recreating, playing, whatever, whatever you do. If you could notice businesses that have abutments at the bottom of the door and, and just write down the address and, and bonus points are given for cell phone photos. And, and I, I ultimately hope to build a, 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 a number of these places. I mean, even, even if it's one or two, it's too, it's too, too many. Because the, the city has been under the, the ADA Act since nineteen ninety. Yet we have, we have a number of places in our own backyard that are not ADA compliant, so.
So sir, you want us to send these to your email?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right, so that, that, that cut me off.
I'm sorry, sir.
No, 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 because I, I can get loquacious. I, I mean, I mean, no disrespect.
No, 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 I, I just wanted to know what your ask was of us. That's what I.
I, I could have said everything I said in two sentences.
Yes, sir.
All right, anyway, anyway, thanks a lot.
Well, thank you for sharing and we'll help as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Would you be able to share your email with the board or get your email shared so that we can do that?
Don't, don't say your email address out loud. If you have a location, send it to the board office. I'll direct it to Mr. Pruitt.
Just one item of follow-up too on this front, Dante, you know, I don't know if you can speak to this, but Mr. Pruitt came to the public safety committee and we kind of referred back to the Department of Buildings to see if we could get a listing of buildings that are non-ADA compliant. And so hopefully the board office is pursuing that route as well.
Okay. But, but I. But I, but I, I, I kind of worried, I mean, not worried, but I, I question how thorough the buildings department records might be. I mean, if, if they, say, say they had a business that was not compliant with the ADA. Uh, that would mean that this business would, has, has gone years without improving its property. Uh, and, uh, but, but, uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. We'll see what happens. We got, we got plenty of time. There's no deadline. And, uh, and I'm taking my sweet time and, um, and it is, it is, it is interesting. This restaurant, we're going to, um, we're going to, uh, for the meet and greet, uh, that was, that was out of compliance about three or four months ago. I mean, I, 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 I mean, the, I mean, I mean, not three or four months ago, about a year ago, it was out of compliance. But, but, but it, it told me that I didn't have Parkinson's then. But I was sensitive to the fact that I had to step up on a, a stone to get into the business. And they, and they, and they created a, they subsequently created a, uh, a, 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 a path for wheelchairs. And I mean, everybody can use it, but it's all.
I apologize. I apologize. But I have to cut you off on it because I just want to make sure we can conclude. But, but definitely to, to your point, I mean, we'll make sure if there's any places that we've identified, we'll make sure that there's a mechanism to get votes to you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any other new business for the board? Okay, hearing none. Um, I just want to thank everyone for, for coming. I want to thank you for your, your participation. I want to thank all the residents, uh, for, for your feedback as well. Uh, the district office team, uh, we will, you know, we will all work together in terms of making sure we're resolving some of the issues that we've heard that were brought up before the board this evening. And you'll be hearing follow-ups to that as well, either through committees or reports directly from the DM or, or from myself as well. But I thank everyone for your, your, your attention. Again, I, I, I ask all board members to make sure you are looking at the calendars. Make sure you are showing up for your meetings. Make sure you are communicating with, uh, the district office and your chairs, your committee chairs as well. Everyone, please, uh, have a wonderful, safe evening, safe week, and I look forward to seeing everyone next month. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn?
There are several people. All those in favor say aye.
Motion to adjourn by Blackwell.
Second Perry.
Thanks.
Blackwell and Perry. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Night, everyone.
Stand adjourned nine fifty-five.
All right. Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Be well.
Bye-bye.